If anyone participating online needs help with Zoom during the meeting, please email Mike Kirkmann at mike.kirkmann@greensboro-nc.gov. Members of the Commission are appointed by the City Council and serve without pay. The Commission reviews all original zoning and rezoning requests for the city of Greensboro. Each Commissioner normally visits each site prior to the meeting. Before we go any further, I'd like to take the opportunity to introduce the Commissioners from my far right, if you'd please give your name.
Warshay Downing.
Andrew Egbert.
Catherine Magid.
Maryus Gaines.
Zach Engel.
Erica Glass.
Paul Gilmour Senior.
And at the moment, we have Mr. Peterson intending to participate online, but he's not there yet. Someone will let us know when he joins the meeting.
Yeah, we're trying to get him in now, but let's go ahead and continue.
Okay, thank you. I want to go over the procedure that we use at our hearings. The planning staff will present background information and make a recommendation. The applicant then will have a, will present a short summary on how he or she communicated with the neighborhood and why the request is reasonable. Other persons in favor of the request speak for a total of 10 minutes shared time with the applicant. Then speakers who are opposed to the request share 10 minutes of speaking time. Those in favor of the request will share five minutes of rebuttal time. Those in opposition to the request will share five minutes of rebuttal time. Any Commission member may ask questions once a presenter has completed their presentation. All Commissioners are required to vote unless they have a conflict of interest. In an effort to run the meetings more efficiently, the Planning and Zoning Commission may reorganize the meeting agenda. Cases in which no opposition has been expressed to the Planning Department and in which Commission members do not feel necessitate in-depth discussion will be moved to the top of the agenda. Staff will provide a shortened presentation for these expedited cases.
Unmute the mic.
And applicants have up to two minutes to address the commission.
They won't let you start the video. What's wrong with your camera?
For the expedited cases, the applicants will have up to two minutes.
Sorry about that.
Is this from the network?
Could everyone on Zoom please mute your microphone?
There will be a shortened presentation for expedited cases, but the applicants will have two minutes to address the Commission if they desire to provide any additional information they want the Commission to know. Expedited cases will then follow the procedure I previously outlined. All denied cases and all approved ordinances receiving six or more favorable votes will constitute final action unless an appeal is submitted to the Planning Department and the appeal fee is paid within 10 days. All ordinances receiving a majority of favorable votes but less than six will be subject to a public hearing by the City Council. When the case is called that you are interested in, people wishing to speak online will need to use the raise hand function and will be called upon to speak in the order in which hands were raised. They will also share that 10 minutes of speaking time. Typically, we alternate perhaps two in-person speakers and then go to an online speaker and come back to the floor speakers. Please find the raise hand function under the reaction button for those who are participating online. People wishing to speak in person will need to come to the podium. When you are called upon to speak, please state your name and address for the record. Please also direct all comments and questions to the zoning commission. Participants in the Zoom meeting will be able to view all, will be able to view the meeting and speak when they are called upon. This meeting is being recorded and televised on the Greensboro Television Network. In addition, the telecast is being closed captioned for the hearing impaired. And we will have some remarks from our attorney, Mr. Ducharme.
Chair Connor. Mr. Peterson is on now.
Thank you.
So we do have Mr. Peterson on.
So welcome, Mr. Peterson.
Good evening, everyone. During this evening's meeting, the Planning and Zoning Commission will hear a number of rezoning applications. I'd like to remind everyone in attendance that when the Commission considers these applications, its determinations are based on the land uses that are allowed under the zoning district that's been put forth in the application, as well as any conditions that have been proposed by the applicant. Now, land use impacts on public infrastructure are relevant in rezoning matters, and it's important to know that the Commission is not here to determine all details of the development. That involves staff input and evaluation that goes beyond the scope of the Commission's work here this evening. If a rezoning would generate a certain amount of traffic flow, Commission members will have been provided with a summary traffic impact study. Meanwhile, many site-specific development features, such as the management of stormwater, are evaluated through the Technical Review Committee rather than in this forum. Lastly, concerns that are not related to land use are not germane to the Commission's consideration of rezoning applications. For example, generalized concerns about crime rates, current or anticipated school capacity, and questions of who may own or live at the subject property are not for the Commission's consideration. If there are questions about matters that are not addressed this evening, those may be referred to the Planning Department or the Technical Review Committee. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We want to confirm before we set our expedited agenda. We would need clarification if there is anybody here to speak either here or online, to speak in opposition to 2005 Mitchell Avenue and 3910 Yanceville Street. We had one person register, but we did not see them come in and we didn't see them online. So is anyone here to speak in opposition to 2005 Mitchell and 3910 Yanceville? If you're online, please raise your hand online.
Chair Connor, no one has raised their hand.
None?
No.
All right, then, Mr. Kirkmann for our expedited agenda. Do you want to?
And actually, before I get there, just want to confirm, I don't know that anybody's here, but just to note for the record that item Z-2402009, that was for a portion of 603 North Elm Street, was withdrawn by the applicant prior to this meeting, and it requires no action by the Commission, but only off-chance that someone's here for that item. Wanted to make sure they knew that that item had been withdrawn by the applicant.
Thank you.
Okay, so stating that, in terms of items that are now eligible for expedited review this evening, PLP 2405 and Z 2402002 for 3444 Randleman Road and a portion of the Randleman Road right-of-way. Item Z 2402003, 2005 Mitchell Avenue and 3910 Yanceville Street. Item PLP 2406 and case Z 2402004 for 5226 Carroll Avenue. Item Z 2402007, 7901 Thorndike Road. Item Z 2402010 for 4822 Cogur Boulevard. Item Z 2402012, properties on Arley Street, Blueford Street, Boyd Street, Salem Street, Stedman Street, and Stewart Street. And then item Z-24-02013, 910 Salem Street. All of these items have no opposition either online or signed up in this evening and are eligible for expedited review.
All right, thank you, Mr. Kirkmann. Then we'll advance those items that Mr. Kirkmann just listed to the front of our agenda for our abbreviated presentations.
Before we jump into the cases, we just noted that we have not actually approved the minutes yet from the November meeting and the January meeting, if you can do that.
Yes, and we actually have minutes from November 20th, 2023, as well as January 8th, 2024, to be approved.
Should we do both at the same time, or do we need to do them separately?
I think we.
I would suggest the Commission do both if you're comfortable doing that. I was making sure to clarify. I would move that we approve both the November and the January minutes.
Andrew Egbert, I'll second it.
Thank you, Mr. Engel and Mr. Egbert. We have a motion and a second. Can we take a voice vote for those present?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. All those in favor of approving the minutes, if you'd signify by saying aye, but also be in the habit of raising your hand in case we have other votes. All those in favor?
Aye.
And Mr. Peterson, your vote? I know we have Mr. Peterson. Can you vote on whether or not you want to approve the minutes of the two meetings?
I think maybe I have technical difficulties at the moment. Mr. Peterson, can you hear us?
I can see him. Mr. Peterson, is your microphone on?
Mr. Peterson, if you're not able to talk on the audio, if you can type in the chat, yes, that will be sufficient.
All right, the minutes for both meetings are approved because of the majority of the vote, and perhaps you can chat or email Mr. Peterson.
Apparently, Mr. Peterson can't hear us at the moment.
Yeah, if his technical difficulties have rendered him unable to vote, I think we can settle it at eight zero.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so we'll move on to the first case on expedited review.
We already listed the withdrawal on our agenda.
Yes, correct.
And there were no other continuances?
There are no other continuances.
Okay. And our first expedited item?
Should be on the screen in front of you.
C 2402002 and PLP 2405, an annexation and original zoning request from County RS40 Residential Single Family to City R3 Residential Single Family III for the property identified as 3444 Randleman Road and a portion of the Randleman Road right-of-way, generally described as west of Randleman Road and north of Old Randleman Road, 1.574 acres.
Yes, thank you, Chair Connor. And before I move forward, on the agenda and in the staff report, there's a lower acreage figure that's listed. That is the acreage for the property, 3444 Randleman Road. When you add in the portion of the right-of-way, that's where you get the 1.574 acres. So I want to make sure you're clear that you're voting on the larger acreage. So again, the request this evening is annexation and original zoning from County RS40 Residential Single Family to City R3 Residential Single Family. North, south, and west request are zone County RS40 Residential Single Family. East request is zone County RS30 and City R3, again, Residential Single Family. The subject property currently contains a single-family dwelling as well as a portion of Randleman Road. North and south request are single-family dwellings. East and west of request are single-family dwellings and undeveloped land. Staff has evaluated this request and found it is consistent with the policies of the adopted comprehensive plan, and we are recommending approval of both annexation and original zoning. Can I answer any questions?
Thank you. Are there any questions? Seeing none, then we will close the public hearing. We will be looking for two motions on this, the first for annexation and the second for zoning.
This is Commissioner, and I would move that we annex the property.
Commissioner Magid, second.
Thank you, Mr. Engel and Ms. Magid. We have a motion and a second for annexation. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye and raising your hand.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Mr. Peterson, are you able to vote?
Based on conversation with Andrew, I think he's still having technical difficulties. So I'd say let's welcome him back into the meeting once he resolves that, but for now, we'll confine the vote to the eight members here.
Okay, and then we'll take a motion on the zoning, please.
Okay. In regards to Agenda item Z-24-02-002, the Greensboro Planning and Zoning Commission believes its action to recommend approval of the original zoning request for the property at 3444 Randleman Road and a portion of the Randleman Road right-of-way from County RS40 Residential Single Family to City R3 Residential Single Family III to be consistent with the adopted GSO 2040 Comprehensive Plan and considers the action taken to be reasonable in the public interest for the following reasons. One, the request is consistent with the Comprehensive Plan's future built form map and future land use map. Two, the proposed City R3 zoning district permits uses that fit the context of the surrounding area and limits negative impacts on the adjacent properties. Three, the request is reasonable due to the size, physical conditions, and other attributes of the area. Will benefit the property owner and surrounding community, and approval is in the public interest.
Commissioner Gilmore, second.
Thank you, Mr. Engel and Mr. Gilmore. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? None, that carries. Thank you. The next item on our expedited agenda is Z 2402003, a rezoning request from CDRM. Can we clear the screen? A zoning request from CDRM 12, Conditional District Residential Multifamily 12, and R5 Residential Single Family 5 to CDRM 12, Conditional District Residential Multifamily 12, for the properties identified as 2005 Mitchell Avenue and 3910 Yanceville Street, generally described as east of Yanceville Street and south of Lee's Chapel Road, 22.49 acres. Mr. Kirkmann?
Thank you, Chair Connor. Again, the subject property used in the request is from CDRM 12, Conditional District Residential Multifamily, and R5 Residential Single Family to CDRM 12, Conditional District Residential Multifamily. North of the request is currently zoned, CDRM 12 and R5. East and west of the property are zoned, R5 Residential Single Family. South of the request is zoned, CDRM 8, Conditional District Residential Multifamily. The subject property currently contains a religious assembly use, a single-family dwelling as well as multifamily dwellings that are currently under construction. North of this request are multifamily dwellings and single-family dwellings. East of the request, single-family dwellings. South of the request are multifamily dwellings, and west of the request is a single-family dwelling in the Craft Recreation Center. This is a conditional zoning application, and I will get there to the condition that's associated with this request. Staff has reviewed this application and has confirmed that it is consistent with the policies of the adopted Comprehensive Plan, and we are recommending a favor of this request. Can I answer any questions?
Are there any questions for Mr. Kirkmann? The applicants here, do they have any additional comments? Seeing none, then we will close the public hearing. I'm sorry, I didn't see you. I'm sorry.
I'm usually pretty quiet. I'm Mark Isaacson at 804 Green Valley Road on behalf of the applicants. The property owner is the Diocese of North Carolina of the Protestant Episcopal Church in the United States and FGM Development. This is an expansion of an existing affordable housing project in northeast Greensboro. We had a neighborhood meeting. Around 10 to 12 people attended. I think we resolved or addressed questions that were brought up at the meeting. Councilwoman Wells also attended the meeting, and I think it received generally favorable reception. So I'm available to answer any questions about the project.
Any questions from the Commissioners?
Thank you.
Seeing none, then we will close the public hearing, and we'll be looking for a motion on this, please.
Madam Chair, this is Warshay Downing. I'd like to make a motion for Agenda item Z 2402003. The zoning amendment statement, oh, the Greensboro Planning and Zoning Commission believes that this action to recommend approval of the rezoning request for the properties at 2005 Mitchell Avenue and 3910 Yanceville Street from CDRM 12, Conditional District Residential Multifamily 12, and R5 Residential Single Family 5, to CDRM 12, Conditional District Residential Multifamily 12, to be consistent with the adopted GSO 2040 Comprehensive Plan and considers the action to be, the action taken to be reasonable and in the public interest for the following reasons. The request is consistent with the Comprehensive Plan, future built form map, and future use land map. The proposed CDRM 12 zoning district are conditioned, permits uses that fit the context of the surrounding area, and limits negative impact on the adjacent properties. The request is reasonable due to the size, physical conditions, and other attributes of the area, and it will benefit the property owner and the surrounding community, and approval is in the public interest.
Catherine Magid, second.
Thank you, Mr. Downing and Ms. Magid. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
This constitutes final action unless an appeal is submitted in writing to the Planning Department, and the appeal fee is paid within 10 days. Anyone may file such an appeal. All such appeals will be subject to a public hearing at the Tuesday, March 19th, 2024 City Council meeting. All adjoining property owners will be notified of any such appeal. The next item on our expedited agenda is PLP 2406 and Z 2402004, an annexation and original zoning request from County RS30 Residential Single Family to City CDR5, Conditional District Residential Single Family 5, for the property identified as 5226 Carroll Avenue, generally described as west of Carroll Avenue and northwest of Sumner Church Road, .542 acres. Mr. Kirkmann?
Thank you, Chair Connor. Again, the request is for annexation and original zoning from County RS30 Residential Single Family to City CDR5, Conditional District Residential Single Family. North of the subject property is zoned a combination of City PI, Public and Institutional, and City CDR5. East and south of the subject property are zoned County RS30 Residential Single Family. West of the subject property is zoned County RS30 and City PI. The subject property is currently undeveloped at this time. North and west request are single-family dwellings and undeveloped land. East and south request are single-family dwellings. This is a conditional zoning application, and this is the condition that is associated with the request. Staff has evaluated the request and feels that it is consistent with the policies of the adopted Comprehensive Plan and are recommending in favor of both the annexation and original zoning. Can I answer any questions?
Are there any questions? Seeing none, if the applicant is present, you have two minutes if you want to make any additional comments. Seeing none, we will close the public hearing. We'll look for two motions, one for annexation and one for zoning.
Catherine Magid, I'd like to make a motion for the annexing of PLP 24-06.
Maryus Gaines, second.
Thank you for the motion and the second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? And then a motion on the zoning?
Item Z 24-02-004, the Greensboro Planning and Zoning Commission believes that its action to recommend approval of the original zoning request for the property at 5226 Carroll Avenue from County RS30 Residential Single Family to City RD, CDR5, Conditional District Residential Single Family 5, to be consistent with the adopted Greensboro 2040 Comprehensive Plan and considers the action taken to be reasonable and in the public interest for the following reasons. One, the request is consistent with the Comprehensive Plan's future build form map and future land use map. Two, the proposed City CDR5 zoning district is conditioned, permits uses that fit the context of the surrounding area, and limits negative impact on the adjacent property. Three, the request is reasonable due to the size, physical conditions, and other attributes of the area. It will benefit the property owner and surrounding community, and approval is in the public
Commissioner Gilmore, second.
Thank you, Ms. Magid and Mr. Gilmore. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Is anyone opposed? This constitutes a favorable recommendation and is subject to a public hearing at the Tuesday, March 19th, 2024 City Council meeting. The next item on our expedited agenda is Z 240207, a rezoning request from CDBP, Conditional District Business Park, to CDLI, Conditional District Light Industrial, for the, for the property identified as 7901 Thorndike Road, generally described as south of Thorndike Road and east of Peg Road, 3.02 acres. Mr. Kirkmann?
Thank you, Chair Connor. And just to clarify, do we have Mr. Peterson available now and is able to speak?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, I'm on. I got it. Thanks.
We had a little technical glitch on this end, apparently. So I think we have that resolved.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson.
It's a Monday, that's all it is.
All day. Again, the request this evening is to rezone from Conditional District Business Park, CDBP, to Conditional District Light Industrial, CDLI. North of the request is currently zoned BP Business Park. East request is zoned LI Light Industrial. South of the request is zoned CDLI, Conditional District Light Industrial, and west request is CDBP. request is CDBP, conditional district business park. The subject property currently contains a vending machine supplier. North of the request contains undeveloped land, as well as a business park. East of the request is undeveloped land. South of the request is a manufacturing use, and west of the request is a storage facility. This is a conditional zoning application, so this is the condition that is associated with the request. Again, Steph has evaluated this request and feels that it is consistent with the policies of the adopted Comprehensive Plan, and we are recommending in favor of this request. Any questions?
Thank you. Are there any questions? Seeing none, if the applicant is present, you have up to two minutes to make any additional comments. Okay, and the applicant will pass on that, so unless there's objection, we'll close the public hearing. We'll look for a motion on this item, please.
Eric Glass, the Greensboro Planning and Zoning Commission believes that its actions to recommend approval of the rezoning request for the property at 7901 Thorndike Road from CD-VP, conditional district business park, to conditional district light industrial, to be consistent with the adopted GSO 2040 Comprehensive Plan, and considers the action taken to be reasonable and in the public interest for the following reasons. The request is consistent with the Comprehensive Plan's future built form map and future land use map. The proposed CDLI zoning district as conditioned permits uses that fit the context of surrounding area and limits negative impacts on the adjacent properties. The request is reasonable due to the size, physical conditions, and other attributes of the area. It will benefit the property owner and surrounding community, and approval is in the public interest.
Commissioner Engel, I'll second that.
Thank you, Ms. Glass and Mr. Engel. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Mr. Peterson, thank you, aye. This approval constitutes final action unless an appeal is submitted in writing to the planning department, and the appeal fee paid within 10 days. Anyone may file such an appeal. All such appeals will be subject to a public hearing at the Tuesday, March 19th, 2024 City Council Meeting. All adjoining property owners will be notified of any such appeal. The next item on our expedited agenda is Z2402010, a rezoning request from BP Business Park and CDCM, conditional district commercial medium, to CDLI, conditional district light industrial, for the property identified as 4822 Coger Boulevard, generally described as north of Coger Boulevard and south of I-40, 9.32 acres. Mr. Kirkman?
Thank you, Chair Connor. Again, the request is a rezoning from, excuse me, from BP Business Park and CDCM, conditional district commercial medium, to CDLI, conditional district light industrial. Oops. Uh, let's see, sorry. North of the request is zoned Light Industrial. East of the request is zoned Business Park. South of the request is also zoned Business Park, as well as CDCM, conditional district commercial medium. West of the request is zoned BP and CDLI. The subject property currently contains a former movie theater. North of the request is Interstate 40. East of the request is undeveloped land. South of the request is undeveloped land, as well as office uses, and west of the request are veterinary service uses and auto sales. Steph has evaluated this, oh, excuse me, actually, this is conditional zoning, let me show you the condition. So that is the condition that is associated with the request. Steph has evaluated this request relative to the policies of the adopted Comprehensive Plan, and we are supportive of the request. If you have any questions?
Are there any questions?
I have one.
Yes, Ms. Maggott?
This is the second case where we've gone from a BP to an LI.
Mm-hmm.
The BP is how many square feet as opposed to the LI?
So the previous case had to do with warehousing and storage uses, and in the Business Park District, there's a maximum square footage cap of 60,000 square feet. So in that case, the rezoning was to allow for additional warehousing use on here. This one is a combination of warehousing uses and self-storage as well, and because of the caps in the Business Park District, they needed to rezone the property to Light Industrial. And in this case, there's also an outdoor storage component as well.
To piggyback on that question, have we thought about adjusting the ordinance to make that more flexible?
Uh, we've talked about it. There's not an industry standard necessarily that says this is a threshold that is the most appropriate square footage. Obviously, people are doing more square footage as a general rule, but we don't have an exact number to work from. We've had conversations on that, yes.
Just something to consider as we look at commercial real estate and how it's changing in the post-pandemic market, we probably need to be a little more flexible.
Yeah, excellent, excellent. And so no limit in the LI?
Correct. There is no cap for square footage in the Light Industrial District.
Yes. Any further questions? If not, if the applicant would like to make any additional comment, if you'd give your name and address, please.
Bow Road and Bow, 230 North Elm Street. I'm here for the applicant, Leaterra Development. Just briefly, in response to your questions, this is an adaptive reuse of the existing movie theater facility for self-storage with indoor and outdoor storage, and that was the principal reason that we had to go to an LI conditional use was for the outdoor storage. We don't plan any material changes in the exterior of the building, and, and we believe it's a use that will be attractive to the neighborhood because it will reduce the amount of traffic and light, light and noise at night, and we believe it's, uh, we sent out a notice to all the neighbors and, and had a public meeting at the, at the Hilton Garden Inn just across the interstate, and nobody appeared at that meeting. Thank you.
Any questions for the applicant? Thank you. Seeing none, we will close the public hearing. We'll look for a motion, please.
I can do that. This is Commissioner Engel. In regards to agenda item Z-24-02-010, the Greensboro Planning and Zoning Commission believes its action to recommend approval of the rezoning request for the property at 4822 Coger Boulevard from BP Business Park and CD-C-M, conditional district commercial medium, to CD-LI, conditional district Light Industrial, to be consistent with the adopted GSO 2040 Comprehensive Plan, and considers the action taken to be reasonable and in the public interest for the following reasons. One, the request is consistent with the Comprehensive Plan's future built form map and future land use map. Two, the proposed CD-L zoning district as conditioned permits uses that fit the context of the surrounding area and limits negative impacts on the adjacent properties. Three, the request is reasonable due to the size, physical conditions, and other attributes of the area. Will benefit the property owner and surrounding community, and approval is in the public interest.
Commissioner Gilmer, second.
Thank you, Mr. Engel and Mr. Gilmer. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
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 Thank you, Mr. Peterson. Anyone opposed? This constitutes final approval unless an appeal is submitted in writing to the planning department, and the appeal fee is paid within 10 days. Anyone may file such an appeal. All such appeals will be subject to a public hearing at the Tuesday, March 19th, 2024 City Council Meeting. All adjoining property owners will be notified of any such appeal. The next item on our expedited agenda is Z2402012, a rezoning request from PUD, Planned Unit Development, RM12, residential multifamily 12, RM18, residential multifamily 18, and R5, residential single family five, to PI, public and institutional, for the properties identified as 1205 Arley Street, 919, 921, 923, 1001, 1003, 1007, 1009, 1011, 1013, 1015, and 1017 Blueford Street, 400, 401, 402, 403, 404, and 406 Boyd Street, 1006, 1100, 1102, 1108, 1200, 1202, 1204, 1206, 1208, and 1210 Salem Street, 400, 401, 402, 403, 404, 405, 412, and 425 Stedman Street, and 311, 400, and 402 Stewart Street, generally described as north and south of Salem Street, west and east of Boyd Street, and west and east of Stedman Street, 11.55 acres.
Thank you, Chair Connor, and excellent job reading all that. Again, the request is for multiple properties, a total of 11.55 acres, from PUD, Planning and Development, RM12 and RM18 residential multifamily, R5, single family, to PI, public and institutional. North of the request is currently zoned, R5 residential single family and RM12 residential multifamily. East and south of the request are zoned PI, public and institutional. West of the request is zoned R5 and PI. The subject properties contain a variety of multifamily dwellings, single-family dwellings, undeveloped land, and an electric substation. North of the request are single-family dwellings, multifamily dwellings, and undeveloped land. East and south of the request are portions of the North Carolina Agricultural and Technical State University. West of the request contains single-family dwellings, undeveloped land, and parking. Steph has evaluated this request relative to the adopted Comprehensive Plan and feels that it is consistent with those policies, and we are recommending in favor of this request. If you can answer any questions.
Are there any questions? If the applicant is present, Ms. Maggott has a question for the applicant. If you'd give your name and address, please.
Good afternoon. Bill Barlow, North Carolina A&amp;T, 1601 East Marcus Street, Greensboro, 27411. I'm the Director of Design and Construction at North Carolina A&amp;T. Certainly, I want to thank you, Chairwoman, and Zoning Commission for working with us over the last 20-plus years. Properties that you look at today, we've been purchasing over the last 20 years, working with that community, working with you all to make sure that we are good neighbors in that community. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Maggott?
Well, my, I just wanted to recognize the project rather than just breezing through, because I think it's an amazing project. 429 bedroom residence in a hall, 2,300 square feet retail, four surface parking lots, that's going to park 252 spaces. I just wonder if you have any drawing or anything that we could just add to the record or if you'd like to say anything?
I didn't bring a drawing, but, you know, we do have drawings that we can provide and add to the record, certainly with the residence hall and the parking. We want to ensure that our students don't park in the existing communities, and we police the area along with Greensboro Police Department, and we ticket our students to make sure they stay local to North Carolina A&amp;T. So we're very excited about the project and excited about what the project is doing. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Any other comments?
Thank you. I just want to say thank you again. We appreciate you all. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. We will close the public hearing and look for a motion.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion for agenda item Z2402012. The Greensboro Planning and Zoning Commission believes that its action to recommend approval of the rezoning request for the properties at 1205 Arley Street, 919, 921, I'm a robot right now, 923, 1001, 1003, 1007, 1009, 1011, 1013, 1015, and 1017, Blueford Street, 400, 401, 402, 403, 404, and 406, Boyd Street, 1,006, 1100, 1102, 1108, 1200, 1202, 1204, 1206, 1208, and 1210, Salem Street, 401, 402, 403, 404, 405, 412, and 425, Stedman Street, and 311, 400, and 402, Stewart Street, from PUD, Planned Unit Development, RM12, residential multifamily 12, RM18, residential multifamily 18, and R5, residential single family five, to PI, public and institutional, to be consistent with the adopted GSO 2040 Comprehensive Plan, and considers the action taken to be reasonable and in the public interest for the following reasons. The request is consistent with the Comprehensive Plan's future built form map and future land use map. The proposed PI zoning district permits uses that fit the context and surrounding area and permits and limits negative impacts on the adjacent properties. The request is reasonable due to the size, physical conditions, and other attributes of the area. It will benefit the property owner and surrounding community, and its approval is in the public interest.
Commissioner Gilmer, second.
Thank you, Mr. Downing and Mr. Gilmer. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Thank you, Mr. Peterson. This approval constitutes final action unless an appeal is submitted in writing to the planning department, and the appeal fee is paid within 10 days. Anyone may file such an appeal. All such appeals will be subject to a public hearing at the Tuesday, March 19th, 2024 City Council Meeting. All adjoining property owners will be notified of any such appeal. Final item on our expedited agenda is item Z2402013, a rezoning request from R5, residential single family five, to PI, public and institutional, for the property identified as 910 Salem Street, generally described as south of Salem Street and east of North Dudley Street, .14 acres. Mr. Kirkman?
Thank you, Chair Connor. Again, the request is a rezoning from R5 residential single family to PI, public and institutional. North of the request is currently zoned, R5 residential single family. East, south, and west of the request is zoned PI, public and institutional. Subject property currently is undeveloped at this time. North of the request is a single-family dwelling. East and west of the request are undeveloped land, and south of the request is a parking lot. Steph has evaluated this request relative to the policies of the adopted Comprehensive Plan, and we are supportive of this request. If you can answer any questions.
Are there any questions? If the applicant would like to make any additional comments, you may. Passing on that. Okay, this was detached from the previous, so we have to do it as a separate item.
Yeah, it is related to the overall project, but it's physically detached from the rest of the request, yes.
Yes, so we will close the public hearing and look for a motion, please.
Catherine Maggott, regarding Z24-02-013, the Greensboro Planning and Zoning Commission believes that its actions to recommend approval for the rezoning request for the property at 910 Salem Street, from R5 residential single family five, to PI, public and institutional, to be consistent with the adopted Greensboro 2040 Comprehensive Plan, and considers the actions taken to be reasonable and in the public interest for the following reasons. The request is consistent with the Comprehensive Plan's future built form map and future land use map. The proposed PI zoning district permits uses that fits the context of the surrounding area and limits negative impact on the adjacent property. The request is reasonable due to the size and physical conditions and other attributes of the area, and it will benefit the property owner and the surrounding community, and approval is in the public interest.
Commissioner Gilmer, second.
Thank you, Ms. Maggott and Mr. Gilmer. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Mr. Peterson? Thank you. This approval constitutes final action unless an appeal is submitted in writing to the planning department, and the appeal fee is paid within 10 days. Anyone may file such an appeal. All such appeals will be subject to a public hearing at the Tuesday, March 19th, 2024 City Council Meeting. All adjoining property owners will be notified of any such appeal. And following through on the theme of this being Monday, and me being into my expedited agenda, I think I failed to complete item number one, PLP 2405, Z2402002. We voted in the affirmative, but I failed to remark that that constituted a favorable recommendation, and it's subject to a public hearing at the Tuesday, March 19th, 2024 City Council Meeting. That completes our expedited agenda. We will now revert to our published agenda in the order the items were published. So our first item, then...
Bear with me one second.
Is Z2402001, a rezoning request from R5 residential single family five, to CDO, conditional district office, for the property identified as 1223 Summit Avenue, generally described as northwest of Summit Avenue... Summit Avenue, generally described as northwest of Summit Avenue and south of Meadow Street, point two-two acres. Mr. Kirkman?
Yes, thank you Chair Connor. Again, the request this evening is to rezone from R five, residential, single-family, to CDO, Conditional District Office. North, south, and west request is zoned R five. East of the request is zoned O Office. Subject property is currently a single-family dwelling. North, south, and west request are single-family dwellings. East of the request is a single-family dwelling as well as an educational use located further east. This is a mid-show in the subject property as seen from Summit Avenue. This is a single-family dwelling located northwest request on Meadow Street, zoned R five. This is a single-family dwelling located north of the request on Andover Avenue, zoned R five. This is a single-family dwelling located northeast request on Summit Avenue, zoned R five. This is a single-family dwelling located east request on Meadow Street, zoned Office. These are single-family dwellings located southeast of the request across Summit Avenue, zoned R five. This is a single-family dwelling located west request on Summit Avenue, zoned R five. This is a view facing northeast on Summit Avenue. Here, the subject property is on your left, and this is facing southwest on Summit Avenue. The subject property here is on your right. This view is facing northwest on Meadow Street. The subject property is on your left, and this is facing southeast on Meadow Street. The subject property is on the right. This is a conditional zoning application, and this is the condition that was advertised as part of the hearing this evening. The GSO twenty-forty Comprehensive Plan designates the site as urban central on the future built form map and residential and the future land use map. Staff has concluded the proposed rezoning does support the comprehensive plan's growing economic competitiveness. Big idea to build a prosperous resilient economy creates equitable opportunities to succeed and fulfilling our framework goal to arrange our land uses for where we live, work, attend school, shop, and enjoy our free time to create a more vibrant and livable Greensboro. The proposed CDO district as condition allows uses that are compatible with existing uses in the surrounding area, and staff would note the subject property is located on the periphery of the residential neighborhood and along a major thoroughfare. Care should be taken in providing an appropriate transition to those adjacent lower-density residential uses. Staff is recommending approval of this request. I can answer any questions.
Are there any questions? Thank you. The applicant and anybody in support of the application has up to ten minutes. If you'd come to the podium and give your name and address, please.
Hi, everyone. My name's Kim Dow. I reside at five-zero-nine Buffalo Tom Drive here in Greensboro. I am here to speak on the rezoning request for one-two-two-three Summit Avenue. I'm wondering if we can, could you please help me pull up that picture, that overview of the property with Summit Street, the very first one that you pulled up?
Madam Chair, we have a problem here.
Yeah, and when you speak, would you speak into the microphone?
Yes, yes, and if you guys could not hear or understand me, because obviously, English is not my first language, just let me know. Yes, that's the one. Can we zoom in on it just a little bit?
Uh, it's a static photo.
Okay, okay.
You can, you can touch on it and put a arrow if you want to emphasize something.
Okay, thank you. It's my first time here. So, first of all, I just want to say thank you, everyone.
If you'd speak into the microphone.
Okay.
Address the commission, please.
Okay, so I just want to say thank you, everyone, for your time, for being here, and thank you all the commission members for your time in this matter, because I'm sure you have looked into it and looked into our rezoning request. I feel that this rezoning should be approved because even though it is sitting, it is sitting where there are houses next to it, to the left and to the right. If you look to the right, if you're looking at the property, looking out to the right, about eight or nine houses down, there is a Burger King, and there is a Sun Trust, and also across the street, there is, I believe, is a High Key Care, Home Care, and a, and a daycare, and some other properties that have already zoned for commercial use. This is already a facing Summit Avenue, and it already has parking behind the house, which would be enough to support the existing space. I think it's only like one thousand fifty, roughly one thousand fifty square feet, which there's enough parking for, I believe, three spaces, three cars right behind the house. So, any traffic, once we do rezon this and we do use it for an office, for, you know, for example, like insurance agency or real estate or something professional, something that would not bring any more noise to the neighborhood than it already is, because it's already facing Summit Avenue, which already had the existing traffic up and down. If you look at the overview here, there is a turn lane in the middle of both directions. So, if you're coming from the one direction and you want to go into the property, you can turn into that turn lane and go directly into the property. You wouldn't even need to come down Meadow Street. So, any use for this as far as for the office intended, it would not affect any traffic on Meadow Street, because people could just directly access the property. And again, using it for office use, I don't foresee any major noise being added, because obviously, it would be a professional use we did, and that is why, with that consideration, we excluded the use for clubs, lodges, and hotels and motels, because we obviously didn't want to add any more noise to the neighborhood. But it's an appropriate use, it's, I didn't think it's anything out of the ordinary for the, for what's already existing along the area and across the street. I'm not sure if you guys have, if the commission have, I'm sure the commission have already looked at it. If you guys have any questions, I'll do my best to answer it.
Thank you. Are there any questions for the applicant? Is there anyone else that would like to speak in support of the application? All right, thank you then. We will ask for any speakers to come forward who want to speak in opposition to the item. You have up to a combined ten minutes. And if you'd give your name and address, please.
Hello, Commissioner, this is Michael Gallagani. I live at thirteen oh five Summit Avenue, Greensboro, four doors up from the property being in question. I do have, and I do like to thank the commission for receiving my email about this and questioning it. I do have some more supporting comments about this. This is my wife, Patty Gallagani, she's my wife, so we're together on this. Thank you very much. Changes, the reasons for disapproval for this at the address of twelve-twenty-three Summit Avenue, changes from R five to CDO could negatively impact the property value of our homes, which we take pride in. The, I've got number two here. The point-two-two-five, or point-two-two acre lot is too small and adequately accommodate a business that could potentially create a, an increased traffic on Meadow Street. Number three, changing the zoning to such wide range of permit use would interrupt the quiet enjoyment and predominantly residential neighborhood that we as homeowners expect when we purchase our homes in that area. Number four, Meadow Street does not have a sidewalk connecting to Summit Avenue. This is on both sides of Meadow Street. That would be also on the property in question. Therefore, changing the zoning could cause problems with pedestrians who have to watch out for vehicles turning onto Meadow and potentially into the parking lot of whatever business establishment is acquired at that point. Number five, there are no buffer between, to eliminate the noise between potential business and the residential, single families surrounding it. Number six, though the neighborhood is not currently registered as a historical district, it is still, it is still considered a viable reminder of the history of Greensboro, when Cone Mills was an integral part of creating a safe and enjoyable neighborhood for workers and their families. Some of the older residents have either remained in the neighborhood and/or have relatives who have decided to live here because of that history, keeping our neighborhood a nice place to live, a place that residential, residents feel comfortable in raising their family and to maintain the history of the neighborhood. I would like to make comments on the crime rate, but I know that we're not supposed to. Predominantly, there has been other problems with other businesses up the street, mainly Burger King, the gas stations, so on. I'm going to leave that out. I'm sorry about that, but there are several businesses in the neighborhood that have closed due to a lack of person, well, customers. As a matter of fact, I believe the same address at one time had another applicant to try and change this into a business, and I think they found out that it was just going to be a little bit too hard to keep a business up on that corner, and they just withdrew before it even got this far. That's my comment. Subject and property remaining as an R five and still a variable profitable if the owner were to sell it as a residential and/or use it as a rental home purpose. Of course, that's their decision. This decision would be a benefit to the neighborhood rather than a potential problem. I do have other comments. I'm only halfway, thank you. As well as, we've talked to other residents in the area. As of a well-established preliminary, primary residential neighborhood, feel the proposed zoning change request would not support the goals of the twenty-twenty-four Comprehensive Plan based on the following: A, the subject property O does not meet the landscape and tree conservation requirements that the state, there must be at least two canopy trees and seventeen shrubs per one-hundred linear foot required for street planting, yard, healthy trees that were on the subject property before removed. There was a large tree in the backyard that was removed, and I did receive a letter from the person asking for this zoning change. The reason they cut it down, primarily because they didn't want the tree falling onto their property or under their home. But the tree was very big, healthy, and I feel it really took down a part of the greenery to the area. Thank you. Buffer yards, there's no buffer between the potential business and the single-family homes that are associated to it. Parking, parking lots, there could be up to twelve spaces into that backyard, which would be actually a hard surface area, which already, we have problems with drainage up in that area. Thank you. Then, the proposed zoning change does not have an urban central characteristic, because there is no front porch in the pictures that we see here. There is a small entrance to the far side of the house off of Meadow, and it's only a single-door entrance. It's not a porch, it's just an entryway stoop, let's put it that way, and it's only one single door. I'm not sure if a business is really comfortable for somebody walking all the way across the front of the building to gain entrance to it, and that's the way I feel about that one. On top of that, I feel Meadow Street is too narrow for a road to adequately support the increased traffic that a potentially, potentially zoning change would bring. This may only be this business right now, but it also could be businesses later that could affect the traffic on Meadow Street. I know I've walked Meadow Street and taken several laps. I do have to avoid traffic walking down Meadow, because I do like walking back further into the neighborhood. I have friends that way as well, and I have to walk on Meadow just to make it up to Summit Avenue, and that's where I live, which has the sidewalk. And I do have to walk in the street. That's another potential problem that we may have there. And then, the last thing I have, there has been several accidents at the corner of Summit and Meadow where drivers drive too fast, of course, on Summit Avenue. But to take the center turn lane or the island, there's a potential problem there, because there has been numerous accidents there. People trying to cross, see that the one side is clear, get to the other side, and oh, there's an accident, because they didn't realize they have to cross both lanes of traffic to get out there. And in that case, I would like to say, please do not go forward with this. I'm just asking for this, and if it does go through, thank you, and I'm sorry it went through myself, but I do appreciate your kind consideration and disapproving this change to it, because we don't know what may happen going forward. We would like to stay as a community and as a neighborhood. I know we have plenty of problems with traffic up and down Summit Avenue. Okay, we accept that part of it, but to, and bring on more problems coming forward, yes. As far as other businesses that were across the street, unfortunately, we had actually turned, turned the zoning commission around on a zoning request to change the property across the street from us. They were trying to plan a small convenience store, then they tried to turn it into a park, or used car parking, or used car lot. That also got turned down by zoning and turned down by the city, but this property right now is an empty lot with a house on it. That used to be for insurance companies, yard service, daytime business. The one across the street where there is a daycare was originally a dental office, which has business nine-to-five, Monday through Friday. Same thing with the daycare. It's not really an impact on the city, on our neighborhood. And I feel that those are, they were established before we even got there, and we've been there twenty-plus years. So, I do appreciate if you would, if you would support our request of, to disapprove of these, this zoning request. I do thank you, and I do appreciate it. Thank you, and I've used up my ten minutes. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions? All right, thank you. The applicant has up to five minutes of rebuttal time, if you would like to make further comments. If you'd give your name and address once more, please.
Yes, hello again. My name is Kim Dow. I still live at five-oh-nine Buffalo Tom Drive. So, I think he mentioned the tree that we did cut down? Yes, I do have an answer for that. The tree that we did cut down, first of all, and I forgot to mention this in the email, but it was suggested by our insurance company, which I can provide the name and phone number and/or email of my insurance company for you guys to confirm that. He did suggest that we do cut the big, in terms of Mr. Mike, I do agree with what he used to describe the tree. It was exceptionally huge, which it was. It was very large, and the branches were hanging way over the roof, so it was suggested by insurance company to cut it, and we do agree that if the branches were too big, it is, it would have, it would be in danger, or it would make cost damage to the roof, which would ultimately cost a lot of money to repair. So, we decided to go ahead and be preventive and cut the branches as suggested by our insurance company and as we see fit and needed for the property. Upon getting the quote for the tree, we did get it quoted to cut only the branches or the entire tree, and we were quoted, I believe, a roughly five-hundred-dollar price difference to remove only the huge branches or the entire tree. So, we did use to, we did choose to remove the entire tree. We didn't know that there were any rules to, that we could not remove any trees in a property, on a property that we own, so if there is, we were not aware of that. So, we decided to cut the entire tree for cost basis, because if we were, you know, if anyone here has ever cut, got a tree, any tree cut down, you know, that costs thousands of dollars anytime they come over, because they have to rent the machine to carry the actual person up high, and then all the equipments that they have to use to cut the tree. So, we decided to cut the entire tree all at one time instead of multiple visits back. And we still actually have the wood on the property. We plan on using it for wood. It just makes sense, makes economical sense. I think he mentioned the crime rate, some, I couldn't hear him clear. He said something about the crime rate, which a use for an office doesn't, I don't see how that could affect the crime rate, so, and I think he mentioned, he mentioned something about property value, which I don't think that is something that the city can consider, can consider as part of the consideration. And if you can remind me, I think that's all I remember that he mentioned, and as far as, oh, something about the historical value of the area? The area is already a mixed-use area up and down the street and across the street, so having one, another prob, one property that sits directly smack in the corner, facing Summit Avenue to be an office, this would not do anything to affect any historical value. I think that's all I remember. If you guys have any other questions, I would try my best to answer. Anything, ladies and gentlemen?
Thank you, thank you.
And I appreciate your time and support in this matter. Thank you.
All right, and we have a minute thirty-seven seconds remaining, if anyone else wants to speak in support. And we have a minute 37 seconds remaining if anyone else wants to speak in support. If not, then we have up to five minutes of rebuttal time for those in opposition. If you would give, come to the podium and give your name and address, please. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Corey Coleman and I live at 1202 Meadow Street, which is three houses behind the residence in question. Just a few things that concern us is, would be the increased traffic in the residential area. Favor to maintain speed limits would present risk to residents, including children, walking to, from bus stops. And there's also a nearby school with several school buses that operate up and down Meadow Street each day. The increased traffic also increases the possibility of traffic accidents. City residents must park in driveways or on curbs. We are prevented from parking in grassy areas. The parking lot that was mentioned is a driveway and it is on Meadow Street. There is no parking on Summit Avenue for the residents in question. Lastly, we understand that the city of Greensboro does not control how the space will be used if it is changed to office space. Would there be an explanation how this could be monitored to ensure that if the request is granted, the property owner and any tenants do use it accordingly? And that is all.
Thank you. We have three minutes and 29 seconds remaining if anyone else would like to speak in opposition. Seeing them, we will close the public hearing. Do we have any comments or questions?
I would like if Mr. Kirkman would explain if this is approved tonight, just to answer the gentleman's last question, you know, for it to be an office, there's a transition, right, that would have to happen from the residential unit that it is to meet the requirements of it being an office. Can you speak a little bit about what that would entail for them to be able to use it as such?
Right. So they'll have to come into the city for a change of use permit, basically from a residential use to an office use. And we will evaluate the property based on standards for non-residential activity. Separately, I guess the question about the uses, whatever uses are allowed in the office zoning district, subject to the condition restriction on here would be allowed and so we would regulate based on that. I would note, I know some folks get confused a little bit at times, office does not allow retail uses, does not allow restaurant uses. I just want to be clear about that, too. I know that sometimes that is confusing for folks, but they do have to come in and do a official change of use when we will evaluate that to make sure there's no public safety issues or other concerns.
Are there also parking requirements?
Yes. Yes, there will be parking requirements required as part of that based on the office use and then based on the square footage of that use.
On the property itself?
On the property, yes.
And sign, and signage?
Yes. Signage will be an option attached or freestanding will be an option in that district. And those would go through the permit as well to ensure we don't have site obstructions or other issues of public safety.
Ms. Gaines? Yes, let's, clarification on what happens. I know they're going to have to put a sidewalk on Summit Avenue, correct?
We were just talking about that, actually. Generally with new construction, you would, if it's a change of use, depends about how much of a change. This is a very small site, so I was just talking with Mr. Tipton about that. I'm not sure if they'll be able to acquire that or not with the change of use, but they'll be at least trying to make sure that there's a safe way for the public to get to the property and away from the property.
What about on Meadow Street? Is it fully furnished?
I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Tipton to speak more.
I believe sidewalk already exists along Summit in front of the property.
But, all right.
And along Meadow Street, it just depends on their plan. So we have requirements based on the square footage of disturbed. And if they don't trigger a certain point, they don't have to install sidewalks, so.
So the potential is there based on the final plan, that they would have to install a sidewalk on Meadow?
Potentially.
Okay. I heard some concerns about buffers and my understanding is going from office to residential, there's going to have to be an average of what, 20, 20 feet of buffer? That's going to involve canopy trees, understory trees?
Yes, they will be required to do landscape buffers between the uses. Trying to figure out what the use is right now.
But there's nothing that would keep them from cutting down the tree? I mean, that's just?
The existing tree, yeah, there was nothing.
I was going to say.
That's a single-family residence. We don't have any tree conservation standards or anything like that that would have applied in that scenario.
We've spent enough money at my house on tree, tree work.
Residents can take down trees if they want to. You're checking on those requirements?
Yeah.
And then there, I know there's, there's tree requirements per number of spaces. And she's talking about parking in the back, so they're going to have to incorporate some more trees in the back as a result of the parking?
Yeah, so generally when you have an office use next to a single-family residential, it'd be a type B landscape buffer, which is at average 25-foot width. And then there's what we call a vehicular use screening, which basically is, so if you're in a parking lot, there's shrubs and trees so you can block the lights and the other things from the parking lot. This is a small lot, so there will be a little bit of flexibility on those standards, but they will be required to do some buffering with this, yes.
Mr. Downing, did you have a question?
Yes, well, kind of, I guess my statement is that I appreciate both sides today. And I understand that on Summit Avenue, there is some concern, but I also see that some streetscaping has been done south, like near Summit, and I believe this area could benefit from that. That deals with the buffers and the sidewalks. I think it will also help with the traffic area. But my question is, were there, was there a petition for those who were against it? I'm talking to the gentleman in the back. Were there people who were outright against this particular? I know you and your wife and your neighbor, but were there others perhaps?
Would you come to the podium, please?
Right. Was there any type of outreach? Because I see this particular statement, you sent a letter out to neighbors. How many letters were sent out?
My letters or the partitioners? The partitioners, I believe she sent out 100 some odd people. I'm not sure of the actual figure to that.
Ma'am, can you open the microphone and speak? Sorry.
Okay.
I don't remember the number correctly, I mean, exactly, but I believe it was roughly 150, 150-something. It was based off the, what's listed on GIS and what the city sent out to me per email.
And to answer that question, the city sent out 152 notices within the 750-foot radius and then that list was provided to the applicant for her to do her mailing.
And there's a, she submitted.
And to be more exact, I did receive two returned mail because it was undeliverable deceased.
Yeah. And there's a summary of her, her.
And there was a meeting to discuss this?
There was no meeting, but I did, I did include my phone number and I did receive, I believe, two phone calls. One was from, I can check my notes, but a lady on Park Avenue, she was just curious what's going on. And she said, okay, yeah, we were just curious. And then I believe another person, I can again check my notes, just called and asked for the intention. No, actually that person was Mr. Coleman and Mr. Mike, yeah, initially, yes. But other than that, no one else.
Good. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Downing, did you have a question for the gentleman?
Yes, to answer your question, Mr. Downing, yes, I do have other neighbors right next to me. Unfortunately, he is with relatives that are fighting cancer right now. He wanted to attend, of course, and the two neighbors up the street from me is part of the legal system here and he couldn't make comment on it as well as the one further up the street. He has a business that runs in the evening outside of the city, so they could not attend as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any further questions?
Do we need to reclose the public hearing?
We did. We were just answering questions. The public hearing is closed, yes. So do if, do we have any comments from commissioners or do I have a motion?
I'll simply say, when I, when I looked at this as I drove on Sunday and I work in the area and I used to live over on Maple Street, so this area's come a long way in the last 10, 15 years. You know, and to me, I think this one, we have looked at traditionally office as a, what we call a transitional use. And this one to me is pretty low-impact considering the fact that what's across the street and catty corner is not conditionally zoned at all and could be a lot of things, a lot more, you know, than what, what they're doing, 0.22 acres. I feel like the, the impact here is probably going to be somewhat small. So I'm, I'm going to support it with the understanding that you all can continue talking, knowing that, you know, depending upon how this goes tonight, you can appeal this, you know, that, which is your right and option. My suggestion would be that you, both parties continue talking and see if you can come to some consensus, looking at the uses, maybe some of the buffers and get this a little more defined, but I, for the time being, I'm going to support it. And I'm willing to make a motion.
I'd like to make a comment. I recall probably 12, 15 years ago, we had a house in a general area that came up and we turned it down. Since that time, I think the, with the comprehensive plan and what's happening in the community, things have changed now, so all communities is going to have to accept a little change here and there, so I will be supporting it. Thank you. No, you go ahead.
All right. I'll, I'll be making a motion this evening in regards to Agenda Item Z-24-02-001. The Greensboro Planning and Zoning Commission believes its action to recommend approval of the rezoning request for the property at 1223 Summit Avenue from R5 Residence for Single Family 5 to CD-O Conditional District Office to be consistent with the adopted GSO 2040 Comprehensive Plan and considers the action taken to be reasonable in the public interest for the following reasons. One, the request is consistent with the Conferency Plan's future built form map and future land use map. Two, the proposed CD-O zoning district as conditioned permits uses that fit the context of the surrounding area and limits negative impacts on the adjacent properties. Three, the request is reasonable due to the size, physical conditions and other attributes of the area will benefit the property owner and surrounding community and approval is in the public interest.
Commissioner Gilmer, a second.
Thank you, Mr. Engel and Mr. Gilmer. We will take a vote on this. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Mr. Peterson is nigh. Anyone opposed? One opposed, thank you. This approval constitutes final action unless an appeal is submitted in writing to the planning department and the appeal fee is paid within 10 days. Anyone may file such an appeal. All such appeals will be subject to a public hearing at the Tuesday, March 19th, 2024 City Council meeting. All adjoining property owners will be notified of any such appeal. Thank you. The next item on our regular agenda. Is item?
One more, sorry. There we go.
Thank you. Is item PLP 2407 and Z 2402005 an annexation and original zoning request from County RS30 Residential Single Family to City CDR5 Conditional District Residential Single Family 5 for the property identified as 4452 Sumner Church Road and a portion of Sumner Church Road right-of-way, generally described as north of Sumner Church Road and north of Old Randleman Road, 10.65 acres? Mr. Kirkman?
Thank you, Chair Connor. Again, the request is for annexation and original zoning from County RS30 Residential Single Family to City CDR5 Conditional District Residential Single Family. North of this request is currently zoned, City CDR5. East and west request is zoned, County RS30 Residential Single Family. South of the request is zoned, County RS40 Residential Single Family and County PI Public and Institutional. Subject property is currently undeveloped at this time. North of the request are single-family dwellings currently under construction. East and south of the request are single-family dwellings and religious assembly uses. West of the request are single-family dwellings and undeveloped land. This is the image of the subject property as seen from Sumner Church Road. These show single-family dwellings that are currently under construction located north of the request on Penley Trail, Zoned City CDR5. This is a single-family dwelling located northeast of the request on Sumner Church Road, Zoned County RS30. This is a religious assembly use located east of the request, Zoned County RS40. This is a single-family dwelling located south of the request, Zoned County RS40. This is a religious assembly use located south of the request, Zoned County PI. This is a single-family dwelling located west of the request, Zoned County RS30. This is a view facing southwest on Sumner Church Road. The subject property here is located on your right. And this is northeast on Sumner Church Road. The subject property here is on your left. This is a conditional application and this is the condition associated with the request. The GSO 2040 Comprehensive Plan designates the property as urban general on the future built form map and residential on the future land use map. This proposed original zoning request does support the Conferency Plan's Creating Great Places goal to expand Greensboro's citywide network of unique neighborhoods, offering residents of all walks of life a variety of quality housing choices and the filling in our framework, big idea to arrange our land uses for where we live, work, attend school, shop and enjoy our free time to create a more vibrant and livable Greensboro. The proposed CDR5 zoning district as conditioned permits uses that are similar to existing uses in the surrounding area and staff has recommended approval of these requests. I can answer any questions.
Are there any questions? Seeing them, we'll have up to a combined 10 minutes for the applicant and any of those in support of the application. If you'd give your name and address, please.
Good evening, Commissioner. My name is Scott Wallace. I'm president and co-owner of Keystone Homes Keystone Group with offices located at 3708 Alliance Drive here in Greensboro, 27407. Thank you for listening to our request this evening. We are really proud of this area and the subdivision that we've developed adjacent to this property. And what we are simply doing with this property is, is adding this property for additional phases for a single-family detached home and, to home community in this area, so. We, we reached out to the neighborhood and we had a meeting February 8th, 2024 at Rehoboth Church and we had a little more than a dozen people attend with us. We had, the number one concern that we had at the meeting was many Guilford County residents did not want to be annexed into the city of Greensboro. And we, we assured them that this, this action has no effect on their property. So we had, generally the meeting in my view was very informational. We had several of our homeowners there and that has bought homes from us recently as well as some neighbors across the street and it's, like I said, several Guilford County residents. We were able to share that, that we'd be connecting one additional road out of the community, best of our knowledge, over to Sumner Church Road, which was, was viewed pretty positive by a few people because they'd see another way out of the community. We had people concerned that we may be building apartments in this, on this 10 acres of land and we assured them that we were not. We were just going to continue the Avondale subdivision that we've already started and this would be phase four of that, that community. There was concerns about traffic, which we talked about and we were, that area, Sumner Church Road hardly has any traffic except on Sundays when, when church is in. So, and then we had Old Randleman Road, which there is traffic, but we didn't feel that it was an overly a large amount. I know people that live there have, have different views of that sometimes. There was a, questions about, were we going to build a noise wall along interstate, the interstate? And I said, no, we, we would not. That would be North Carolina apartment transportation and that would, that's not, that would not be us, so. So we, we had a very good meeting, was there an hour and a half, very gentle, very cordial. And since that time or, or before that time, I have not received any telephone calls, texts or emails from anybody from the community. And we sent out a letter and invitation to our meeting with our contact information to, I think it was 95 nearby adjacent property owners, so. I am, we very much, we very much appreciate, appreciate your support to be able to add additional homes for this very successful neighborhood we have. We haven't done the engineering on the community yet, but we're hopeful that we'll get in the range of 45 homes plus or minus that will, that we'll be able to add to this successful community, so. I'd love to answer any questions. on the community yet, but we're hopeful that we'll get in the range of 45 homes, plus or minus, that will, that we'll be able to add to this successful community. So I'd love to answer any questions you may have, and thank you for considering our request.
Thank you. Are there any questions? We have 6 minutes and 25 seconds remaining. If anyone else would like to speak in support of the application?
Just real quick, ingress egress right now, Winsland?
Pardon?
Winsland Road. Little stub street here, is that where the ingress egress is planned?
So the one ingress, an ingress that we have out of the community currently is Carroll Avenue.
Yeah, but I'm talking inside. There's Penley Trail, and then you've got, from the existing neighborhood, Winsland?
Yes, yes.
So you'll connect, you'll connect in through there?
It is, that road will be continued on to Sumner Church Road.
And do you, do you expect to have a second entrance on Sumner Church?
We do not.
Okay.
We do not.
And Chair O'Connor, Commissioner Peterson had to leave the meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Chair O'Connor, with that information, if we could, just at the appropriate time, take a vote to excuse him from the meeting.
All right. Can we take, interrupt and take a vote to approve Mr. Peterson's departure from the meeting?
I'll move that we approve Mr. Peterson's departure from the meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Engel and Mr. Gilmer. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you. Sorry for the interruption.
No problem.
Do we have any other questions or comments for the applicant?
How many units are in the existing development now?
I should know that answer. I think it's in, I think it's around 80, 80, I think it was 82, plus or minus, there's eight there. In my younger years, I could remember. That's better. Thank you.
Any further questions? Okay, we still have the 6 minutes and 23 seconds remaining if there's any further comment in support of the application.
Yes, may I help with that? Just pulled up the conditions for the existing single-family. The CDR 5 that's existing is limited to a maximum of 85 single-family dwellings.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
All right. We have up to 10 minutes available for anyone who wants to speak in opposition. If you'd come to the podium and give your name and address, please. Do we have anybody online?
Chair O'Connor, we do not.
Thank you. So last call on this. Does anyone want to speak in opposition to the Seeing none, then we will close the public hearing. And I will look for two motions, one for an annexation and one for a zoning. Ms. Keens, I move approval of the annexation.
Second, Waishay Downing, second.
Thank you, Ms. Keens and Mr. Downing. We have a motion and a second for, to approve the annexation. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Is anyone opposed? Right, then a motion on the zoning, please.
This is Andrew Egbert. I'll make a motion on Z 2402005. The Greensboro Planning and Zoning Commission believes that its action to recommend approval of the original zoning request for the property at 4452 Sumner Church Road and a portion of Sumner Church Road right-of-way from County RS 30 Residential Single Family to City CDR 5 Conditional District Residential Single Family 5 to be consistent with the adopted GSO 2040 Comprehensive Plan considers this action taken to be reasonable and in the public interest for the following reasons. The request is consistent with the comprehensive plan's future built form map and future land use map. The proposed City CDR 5 zoning district as conditioned permits the use fit context surrounding area, limits negative impacts on the adjacent properties. The request is reasonable due to the size, physical conditions, and other attributes of the area. It will benefit the property owner and the surrounding community in the approvals in the public interest.
Thank you, Mr. Egbert.
Erica Glass, our second.
Thank you, Ms. Glass, for the second. We have a motion and a second on the zoning. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Is anyone opposed? Right, this constitutes a favorable recommendation and is subject to a public hearing at the Tuesday, March 19, 2024 City Council meeting. Typically, whenever we have a break somewhere between 7:00 and 7:30, we have to take a brief break for our sign interpreters. So we will pause before we move to our next item and take a 10 to 15-minute break. Which would you prefer?
Let's be specific.
Let's say 15 minutes, and we'll return. Thank you.
Thank you.
I apologize, having some issues here. Give me the submit.
I promise you, we had the presentation up a minute ago. I don't know what's going on with this. I apologize for the issues.
So we're never gonna let Luke?
From the book, but you need the slides, I know.
We're never letting Luke take another vacation, are we?
It's Monday. It's a large file. It'll just take a minute, I think. Be patient. There we go. The next item on our agenda is item Z 2402006, a rezoning request from R5 Residential Single Family 5 to CD RM 18, Conditional District Residential Multifamily 18, for the property identified as 2207 Jones Road, generally described as south of Jones Road and west of US 220, .94 acres.
Thank you Chair Carter, and I apologize again for the delay on that. Again, the request is a rezoning from R5 Residential Single Family to CD RM 18, Conditional District Residential Multifamily. Northeast and west of the request are currently zoned R5 Residential Single Family. South of the request is zoned CD RM 18, Conditional District Residential Multifamily. The property currently contains a single-family dwelling. Northeast and west of the request are single-family dwellings. South of the request are multifamily dwellings. This is a view of the subject property as it's seen from Jones Road. These are single-family dwellings located north of the request, zoned R5. This is a single-family dwelling located east of the request, also zoned R5. These are multifamily dwellings located south of the request on Juliet Place, zoned CD RM 18. And this is a single-family dwelling located west of the request, zoned R5. This is the view facing east on Jones Road. The subject property here is located on your right. And this is facing west on Jones Road. The subject property here is on your left. This is a conditional application, and these are the conditions that are associated with this request. Conference plan designates this property as urban general on the future built form map and residential on the future land use map. Staff has concluded this request does support the conference of plans fill-in our framework strategy to encourage higher density infill development, to ensure mixed-use projects both strengthen and add value to the community, and the conference of plans creating great places strategy to meet housing needs and desires with a sufficient and diverse supply of housing products, prices, and location. Proposed CD RM 18 district as condition allows uses that are compatible with the existing varied residential uses and densities in the surrounding area, while also limiting potential negative impacts on adjacent properties, and staff is recommending approval of the request. I can answer any questions.
Do we have any questions? Thank you.
I apologize, having some issues here. Give me the submit. I promised you we had the presentation up a minute ago. I don't know what's going on with this. I apologize for the issues.
You can go from the book, but you need the slides, I know.
We're never letting Luke take another vacation, are we?
It's Monday. It's a large file. It'll just take a minute, I think. Be patient. There we go. The next item on our agenda is item Z 2402006, a rezoning request from R5 Residential Single Family 5 to CD RM 18, Conditional District Residential Multifamily 18, for the property identified as 2207 Jones Road, generally described as south of Jones Road and west of US 220, .94 acres.
Thank you Chair Carter, and I apologize again for the delay on that. Again, the request is a rezoning from R5 Residential Single Family to CD RM 18, Conditional District Residential Multifamily. Northeast and west of the request are currently zoned R5 Residential Single Family. South of the request is zoned CD RM 18, Conditional District Residential Multifamily. The property currently contains a single-family dwelling. Northeast and west of the request are single-family dwellings. South of the request are multifamily dwellings. This is a view of the subject property as it's seen from Jones Road. These are single-family dwellings located north of the request, zoned R5. This is a single-family dwelling located east of the request, also zoned R5. These are multifamily dwellings located south of the request on Juliet Place, zoned CD RM 18. And this is a single-family dwelling located west of the request, zoned R5. This is the view facing east on Jones Road. The subject property here is located on your right. And this is facing west on Jones Road. The subject property here is on your left. This is a conditional application, and these are the conditions that are associated with this request. Conference plan designates this property as urban general on the future built form map and residential on the future land use map. Staff has concluded this request does support the conference of plans fill-in our framework strategy to encourage higher density infill development, to ensure mixed-use projects both strengthen and add value to the community, and the conference of plans creating great places strategy to meet housing needs and desires with a sufficient and diverse supply of housing products, prices, and location. Proposed CD RM 18 district as condition allows uses that are compatible with the existing varied residential uses and densities in the surrounding area, while also limiting potential negative impacts on adjacent properties, and staff is recommending approval of the request. I can answer any questions.
Do we have any questions? Thank you. If the applicant would like to come forward and give us your name and address, please. You have up to 10 minutes.
Good evening, everyone. My name is William Johnson. This is my wife Pauline Johnson. We currently reside at 2406 North Elm Street here in Greensboro. We currently own the property, and the property has been in our family, my wife's family, for close to 80 years. So it's definitely a lot of value and sentimental value to us and the property. Recently, we had a tenant in there, this long-term tenant, and she wasn't able to maintain the property due to some health things going on. So we had to make a choice in terms of what to do with the property. Before I get into that, I'd like my wife to kind of explain the history behind it and kind of her family that was, lived in the property for so long.
Good evening, and thank you. My name is Pauline Johnson of 2406 North Elm Street. I am the granddaughter of Comey and Francis Inslo. I grew up on Jones Road myself, and my mom still resides in my home place. And across the street from my grandparents, I have a lot of fond memories of this particular place. My grandparents, who I call Mamu and Papa. My grandmother was an educator for 40 years in Greensboro City Schools. My grandfather worked for Western Electric. They were both members of the Bethel AME Church on Regan Street. They were married for over 50 years. And this property represents their legacy. And though it, change may be difficult, it's my sincere belief that providing housing for more families is a better use than this land remaining dormant. And I believe that it would honor their values as well to serve their community. I also have a picture if anyone wants to see some, just their contributions as well.
We did reach out to the community, went knocking on doors, actually, to residents of Jones Road, and had a chance to talk to many of the residents, some who are actually here tonight. There were some concerns, and we tried to explain kind of how we will minimize those concerns. We can't completely eradicate. The biggest concern was traffic. There are, you know, potentially more families that will be moving there. So it makes the street busier, potentially noisier. But we feel like some of the solutions that we'll have in place will be able to help mitigate that. Another big issue was parking on the street. We also feel like there are solutions, if we're granted the zoning request, to be able to mitigate those solutions by adding additional parking beyond what is required of the property that's been submitted to CRC, to be able to mitigate that as well. So even though we can't eradicate all the issues that are there, we're invested in the neighborhood. And this is, again, a part of our family, so we want to see the neighborhood thrive, and we want to see what's best for the neighborhood. In our opinion, this is, and we'll continue to work with the residents there on Jones Road to make sure that this is a solution that works well for everyone.
Do we have any questions? Would anybody else like to speak in support of the application? If so, could you come over and identify yourself and give your name and address, please? Did you want to speak in favor? Thank you.
Thank you.
Sir, again, is there anybody else? We have another seven minutes remaining if anyone wants to speak in support of the application. If not, we have up to 10 minutes available for anyone in opposition. If you'd like to come to the podium and give your name and address, please.
Good evening. Thank you for being here today, and I appreciate all your guide, and all my neighbor too.
Okay, could you give your name and address, please?
Yes, my name is Hung Gassor, and my address at 2212 Jones Road. I speak as this one is 2207, it's across from my house. That's why, again, this project be, my concern be like the traffic. My neighbor was a long time, maybe 12 years over there, being quite neighbor. It's what's good neighbor. That's why, that's why, again, this one is there. Zone they open, this one is across my driveway. That's a proportion right here, they saw you guys already. That's why the reason I come here today, again, this one, the project, please confirm this one, it's help us to good, good, good neighbor. Thank you.
Thank you. Was there another speaker?
Yes, ma'am.
It's a large file, it'll just take a minute, I think. Be patient. There we go. The next item on our agenda is Item Z 2402006, A Rezoning Request From R5 Residential Single Family 5 To CD RM 18, Conditional District Residential Multifamily 18, For The Property Identified As 2207 Jones Road, Generally Described As South Of Jones Road And West Of US 220, .94 Acres.
Thank you Chair Connor, and I apologize again for the delay on that. Again, the request is a rezoning from R5 Residential Single Family To CD RM 18, Conditional District Residential Multifamily. Northeast and west of the request are currently zoned R5 Residential Single Family. South of the request is zoned CD RM 18, Conditional District Residential Multifamily. The property currently contains a single-family dwelling. Northeast and west of the request are single-family dwellings. South of the request are multifamily dwellings. This is a view of the subject property as it's seen from Jones Road. These are single-family dwellings located north of the request, zoned R5. This is a single-family dwelling located east of the request, also zoned R5. These are multifamily dwellings located south of the request on Juliet Place, zoned CD RM 18. And this is a single-family dwelling located west of the request, zoned R5. This is the view facing east on Jones Road. The subject property here is located on your right. And this is facing west on Jones Road. The subject property here is on your left. This is a conditional application, and these are the conditions that are associated with this request. Conference Plan Designates This Property As Urban General On The Future Built Form Map And Residential On The Future Land Use Map. Staff has concluded this request does support The Conference of Plans Filling In Our Framework Strategy To Encourage Higher Density In Field Development, To Ensure Mixed Use Projects Both Strengthen And Add Value To The Community, And The Conference of Plans Creating Great Places Strategy To Meet Housing Needs And Desires With A Sufficient And Diverse Supply Of Housing Products, Prices And Location. Proposed CD RM 18 District As Condition Allows Uses That Are Compatible With The Existing Varied Residential Uses And Densities In The Surrounding Area, While Also Limiting Potential Negative Impacts On Adjacent Properties. And Staff is recommending approval of the request. I can answer any questions.
Do we have any questions? Thank you. If the applicant would like to come forward and give us your name and address, please. You have up to 10 minutes.
Good evening, everyone. My name is William Johnson. This is my wife Pauline Johnson. We currently reside at 2406 North Elm Street here in Greensboro. We currently own the property, and the property has been in our family, my wife's family, for close to 80 years. So it's definitely a lot of value, and sentimental value to us and the property. Recently, we had a tenant in there, this long-term tenant, and she wasn't able to maintain the property due to some health things going on. So we had to make a choice in terms of what to do with the property. Before I get into that, I'd like my wife to kind of explain the history behind it and kind of her family that was, lived in the property for so long.
Good evening, and thank you. My name is Pauline Johnson of 2406 North Elm Street. I am the granddaughter of Comey and Francis Inslo. I grew up on Jones Road myself, and my mom still resides in my home place. And across the street from my grandparents, I have a lot of fond memories of this particular place. My grandparents, who I call Mamu and Papa. My grandmother was an educator for 40 years in Greensboro City Schools. My grandfather worked for Western Electric. They were both members of the Bethel AME Church on Regan Street. They were married for over 50 years. And this property represents their legacy. And though it, change may be difficult, it's my sincere belief that providing housing for more families Is A Better Use Than This Land Remaining Dormant. And I believe that it would honor their values, as well to serve their community. I also have a picture, if anyone wants to see some, just their contributions as well.
We did reach out to the community, went knocking on doors, actually, to the residents of Jones Road, and had a chance to talk to many of the residents, some who are actually here tonight. There were some concerns, and we tried to explain kind of how we will minimize those concerns. We can't completely eradicate. The biggest concern was traffic. There are, you know, potentially more families that will be moving there. So it makes the street busier, potentially noisier. But we feel like some of the solutions that we'll have in place, we'll be able to help mitigate that. Another big issue was parking on the street. We also feel like there are solutions, if we're granted the zoning request, to be able to mitigate those solutions by adding additional parking Beyond What Is Required Of The Property That's Been Submitted To CRC, to be able to mitigate that as well. So even though we can't eradicate all the issues that are there, we're invested in the neighborhood. And this is, again, a part of our family, so we want to see the neighborhood thrive, and we want to see what's best for the neighborhood. And in our opinion, this is, and we'll continue to work with the residents there On Jones Road to make sure that this is a solution that works well for everyone.
Do we have any questions? Ms. Maggott?
Outreach to the neighborhood, could you speak to that a little?
Yes, I developed a flyer that we sent out to the residents at Jones Road. And for those I had a chance to hand to, face-to-face, you guys need to see. Okay. And that's not an exact rendition of what it's going to look like, but it is an idea, kind of given what could potentially be there. So we did explain what we were thinking about there to the residents we saw in person. And for those I did not see in person, we left it in their mailboxes as well. So we tried to knock on all 23 doors on Jones Road, and as well as Jonah Terrace and Four Seasons Boulevard, to let them know what was going on, what we're thinking, and to be able to get their feedback as well.
Any other questions? Would anybody else like to speak in support of the application? If so, could you come over and identify yourself and give your name and address, please? Did you want to speak in favor? Thank you.
Thank you.
Sir, again, is there anybody else? We have another seven minutes remaining, if anyone wants to speak in support of the application. If not, we have up to 10 minutes available for anyone in opposition. If you'd like to come to the podium and give your name and address, please.
Good evening. Thank you for being here today, and I appreciate all your guide, and all my neighbor too.
Okay, could you give your name and address, please?
Yes, my name is Hung Gassor, and my address is 2212 Jones Road. I speak, is this one, is 2207, is across from my house. That's why, again, this project be, my concern be like the traffic. My neighbor was a long time, maybe a 12-year over there, being quite neighbor. It's what's good neighbor. That's why, that's why, again, this one, the zone they opened, this one is across my driveway. That's a proportion right here, they saw you guys already. That's why, the reason I come here today, to, again, this one, the projects, please confirm this one, is help us to, good, good, good neighbor. Thank you.
Thank you. Was there another speaker?
Yes, ma'am.
If you give your name and-
My name is Duane Ellis, and I live at 2200 Jones Road. Been there 32 years. This would be a major league problem. Because of the traffic, we have a lot of elderly people that live on this street. And, I mean, that house is, people have lived in that house, but The last person that moved out of there has some interior issues. Not sure what it is, but this is a definite no-no, and our other neighbors are against it. Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have eight minutes and 54 seconds remaining. If anybody else would like to speak in opposition to the application? Yeah, if there's more than one speaker, you can feel free to line up over here at the podium, if you'd like to save a little time.
Hello, my name is Felicia Donnell. I live at 2222 Jones Road. I have been living at that address for 15 years. And this plan that they're trying to do, I think, is a, going to be a chaos. For the simple fact, the street is too narrow For All Of The Traffic That's Going To Be Going, Coming And Going. And also, we worry about the children. There's a lot of children in that community, even though it is a park there. But we have this new development they're trying to build, it's just going to be a chaos. Excuse me. And also, for the ones that have dogs. We walk our dogs, and with all the traffic, it's still, it's just going to be a mess there. So, I'm short of breath. So I just, I don't think it's a good idea for this to come. I really don't.
Thank you. We have another speaker?
Hello, my name is Keisha Scott. I live at 2205 Jones Road, Which Is Directly Next Door To Where They're Propositioning Putting These Apartments. As Previously Stated By Neighbors, we, we're, it's a small residential community. I believe the planner said that there are 23 residences on Jones Road. So to proposition to put 12 in a spot where there's one house, it's seemingly chaotic. Like they said, for the traffic, even with, school buses do come in and out of the neighborhood, but with 12 more families, it's just, it's going to be chaos With People Going In And Out, and it's also at a dead-end street. So we live at like a pitchfork. So our street ends, and it turns and it goes out on another street. So it's like, it's, there's no turnaround at the bottom of the street. We don't have sidewalks on our street, our street is very narrow. We have families that have dogs and kids and things like that, and it's just, it's a lot of elderly residences in our community. And also, there are no apartments over there. I know that would seem like a good thing to some people, like, hey, let's put some apartments over here. There are no apartments over here. But the apartments that were shown, I guess it's south of that address, they're actually completely behind us on another street. They have other access and entrances in and out to those apartments. None of those entrances or exits are on our street. So that apartment development behind us doesn't affect us at all. Putting, putting one at the bottom of the street in the middle, in the middle of a single-family residential home, I just don't think it's, you know, suffice for our neighborhood. So, if y'all would just consider our concerns, it would be greatly appreciated.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else that would like to speak in opposition? Seeing none, then the applicant has up to five minutes of rebuttal time. If you'd like to come back to the podium, and if you don't mind, repeat your name and address.
William Johnson, 2406 North Elm Street in Greensboro. We definitely understand the concerns, they're real concerns. But just to address some of the issues, they're not going to be apartments. They'll be townhomes, single-family townhomes, That Are There With, you know, One Attached Garage, As Well As An Additional Parking Space In Front Of Each Home, And Additional Parking Behind It. The street does curve around, so it's not a dead-end street. So there is a way to access that place from Delta Place, which is right behind, as well as on Jones Road. So it doesn't dead-end, it does curve around to that. But yes, I mean, there's, there are issues that we can't, you know, hide from. There is going to be additional traffic there on the road. But what our commitment would be is to work with our neighbors there. Again, we're still invested in the community and to work with them To Ensure That, One, The Right Tenants Who Will Be There Are The Right People. And heavily screened, and make sure that, again, we had someone that was living there Who was a good neighbor, you know, for all those 12 years. And I think everybody would agree that she was fine. So again, having people like that that are there that would care for the neighborhood And Be Invested In Neighborhood As Well Is Our Uppmost Priority. Again, this project, this property is very essential to our family, And We Want To Maintain That And Maintain A Community There That Will Add Value To The Entire Neighborhood. So we're not going to do anything that's going to detract from the neighborhood. We want to see everybody's property values increase, which we think it will do, And We Want To Add To The Look Of The Neighborhood As Well. So that's, you know, utmost importance. My mother-in-law, my wife's mother, lives across the street. She is one of the tenants that will be impacted by this as well. So we're working actively. Again, we're invested in this as well, to make sure that everyone is safe, That All The Issues Are Addressed, And That It Maintains A Level Of Vibrancy. The only other issue is, we could, you know, just leave the property there, and I think that would be a disservice for it to just to die. And, again, the house was built in 1947, you know, so It's a choice of just letting it remain dormant, Or Doing Something That Could Add To The Value And The Feel Of The Neighborhood. So we're looking at the opposite side, that by bringing, you know, 12 new families, That Would Be Quality Families There Would Enhance The Neighborhood And Not Take Away From What's There As Well.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that would like to speak in support of the application? Thank you. If not, then we do have up to five minutes available For Anybody Who Wants To Still Speak In Opposition. If you want to clarify anything. Seeing none, then we will close the public hearing. Do we have any questions or comments from commissioners?
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify a couple things with staff. For, if they were to get the 12 units, What Would The Parking Requirements Be For Them By Ordinance?
It'll partly depend on the types of units with that. So for townhome units, it's 2.1 spaces per dwelling unit.
Okay.
If it's a multifamily, it's based upon the amount of bedrooms per multifamily, Like An Apartment Or Something Else On There.
So, okay.
And then, single-family would be two units, two spaces per unit with single-family.
And just looking at this, .94 acres, if they were, if we weren't to get this in R5, They Could Build Four Plus Houses On This Lot? At Least Four?
I'd have to look at the street frontage, because, you know, with single-family lots, you have-
I was just kind of eyeing it, based on what was there. It looked like they could get four houses on that.
That might, I don't want to commit to that one way or the other, but yes.
I'm just, and it could-
They can do more than one single-family, I couldn't commit to that, how about that?
Definitely. And I was noticing that there's one house on the street that's already zoned RM 18, 2201. Is that a?
That, I believe, is part of the, yeah, that is actually part of the zoning For The Multifamily To The South, That Larger Rezoning That Was In 2002. That Lot's Included With That.
Interesting, okay. That's, that's all I had.
Any other questions or comments from commissioners?
Well, I have a question. Would, would buffers be required if?
Go ahead, Mr. Downing.
Yes, would buffers be required for this particular proposal, or?
Yes, if you have a-
What type of?
Townhome or multifamily against a single-family, it's a type C yard. It's an average 15-foot width, so there would be some buffer requirements.
Mr. Gilmer, were you about to say something?
Yes, Madam Chairman, I am familiar with this house. I've been in this house, I guess, maybe 40, 50 years ago. The Comey-Inslo were good friends of mine. I know them, Joyce and Carol, they were my classmates. I will be supporting this development, I think it's an enhancement to the community. And so I will be supporting it.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Mr. Downing?
I will add that the neighborhood is a very beautiful neighborhood as well. And I think it's in good interest of the neighborhood for this particular development. However, I will encourage continued conversation and perhaps negotiations As To Whatever Is Next. But I do see this as a viable plan for the neighborhood.
Do we have a motion?
This is, this is Commissioner Maggott, I'll make a motion.
Oh, you want to do it? Oh, good.
In reference to Item, Item Z-24-02-006, The Greensboro Planning and Zoning Commission believes That This Action To Approve The Rezoning Request For The Property At 2207 Jones Road From RS Residential Single Family To CD RM 18 Conditional District Residential Multifamily To Be Consistent With The Adoption GSO 2040 Comprehensive Plan And Considers The Action Taken To Be Reasonable And In The Public Interest For The Following Reasons. And In The Public. The, the request is consistent with the comprehensive plan, Future Built Form Map And Future Land Use Map. The Proposed CD, CD RM-18 Zoning District As Condition Permits Uses That Would Fit The Content Of The Surrounding Area And Limit Negative Impact On The Adjacent Property. The Request Is Consistent Due To The Size, Physical Condition, And Other Attributes Of The Area. It Will Benefit The Property Owners And The Surrounding Community, And Approval Is In The Public Interest.
I'll second that motion, and I'll only say this evening That I would encourage the applicant and the neighborhood to continue talking about this. There's still time to try to come to, you know, compromises and solutions Other Than What We Might Decide This Evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gilmer and Mr. Engel. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Is anyone opposed? One is opposed, thank you. This approval constitutes final action, Unless An Appeal Is Submitted In Writing To The Planning Department And The Appeal Fee Is Paid Within 10 Days. Anyone May File Such Appeal. All Such Appeals Will Be Subject To A Public Hearing At The Tuesday, March 19th, 2024 City Council Meeting. All Adjoining Property Owners Will Be Notified Of Any Such Appeal. Thank you. The next item on our planning agenda is Item PLP 2408 And Z 2402008, An Annexation And Original Zoning Request From County RS 40 Residential Single Family To City CDR 7, Conditional District Residential Single Family 7, For The Properties Identified As 3849 Lewiston Road And A Portion Of 1908 ZZ Hackamore Road, Generally Described As West Of Lewiston Road And North Of Hackamore Road, 24.197 Acres. Mr. Kirkman?
Yes, thank you Chair Connor. Again, the request is for annexation and original zoning From County RS 40 Residential Single Family To City CDR 7 Conditional District Residential Single Family. Northeast of the request is currently zoned County CZ, CZ PDR, Which is Conditional Zoning Plan Development Residential, And County RS 40 Residential Single Family. East and south of the request are zoned County RS 40. West of the request is zoned City PNR Parkland Natural Resources. The subject property currently contains a single-family dwelling and agricultural land. North and east of the request are single-family dwellings and undeveloped land. South of the request are single-family dwellings, and west of the request is Lake Higgins, excuse me. This image shows the eastern portion of the subject properties as seen from Lewiston Road. This image shows the southern portion of the subject properties as seen from Hackamore Road. This is a single-family dwelling located north of the request, zoned County CZ PDR. This is a single-family dwelling located north of the request, zoned County RS 40. This is a single-family dwelling located east of the request, zoned County RS 40. This is undeveloped land located east of the request, zoned County RS 40. This is a single-family dwelling located south of the request, zoned County RS 40. This is a single-family dwelling located south and east of the request on Hackamore Road, zoned County RS 40. It's another single-family dwelling, also located south of the request, zoned County RS 40. And these are single-family dwellings also located south of the request, zoned County RS 40. Sorry, that's that image. This image shows a portion of Lake Higgins that's located west of the request, zoned City PNR. This view is facing south on Lewiston Road. The subject property here is on your right. This is facing north on Lewiston Road. The subject property here is on your left. This is a view facing west on Hackamore Road. The subject property here would be on your right. And this is facing east on Hackamore Road. The subject property here is located on your left. This is a conditional application. There was one condition that was associated with this request and advertised as part of the hearing. The applicant wishes to add one additional condition this evening. New condition number two would state that no vehicular access shall be permitted on Hackamore Road. So I ask the commission to accept that condition.
I'll move that we accept this condition.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Uh, thank you, Mr. Engel and Ms. Maggott, That we have a motion to accept the second condition. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you.
Okay, thank you. GSO 2040 Comprehensive Plan Designates This Property As Urban General On The Future Built Form Map And Residential On The Future Land Use Map. The Original Zoning Request Does Support The Conference Of Plans Creating Great Places Goal To Expand Greensboro Citywide Network Of Unique Neighborhoods, Offering Residents Of All Walks Of Life A Variety Of Quality Housing Choices, And The Filling In Our Framework Big Idea To Arrange Our Land Uses For Where We Live, Work, Attend School, Shop, And Enjoy Our Free Time To Create A More Vibrant And Livable Greensboro. Proposed CDR 7 District As Condition Permits Uses That Are Compatible With Existing Uses In The Surrounding Area. Staff is recommending approval of these requests. I can answer any questions.
Do we have any questions? Then we have up to 10 minutes for the applicant.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and members of the commission. It's Mark Isaac, Senate 804 Green Valley Road. I'm here this evening on behalf of the applicant. Will Yerns and Granville Homes are the applicant, is the applicant here. Will, if you'll just raise your hand and be recognized here. Will and Granville Homes have been in business here for several years, Primarily build single-family and attached single-family projects here in Greensboro. Let's see if we can move this along. Yep, so we went over the condition. The vehicular access condition was added After We Heard Some Concerns About Access On Hackamore At A Neighborhood Meeting That We Held, And We Went Ahead And Added That Condition In Response To Those Concerns. And the other condition here that you're, you see is the maximum of 76 watts, And That's An Important Condition That We'll Discuss In A Few Minutes. I wanted to direct the commission's attention to this zoning map. It's a little larger perspective than what you might typically see from the staff's report. The subject property is in dark blue on the left side, it's got a star on it. And That's Lewiston Road Running North-South. Hackamore is to the south of that, and of course, we just made a condition That There Would Be No Access To This Property From That, From That Road. But I think the commission may want to take a look at this, Because Lewiston runs north-south here, And You'll See Jessup Grove Road Running East-West, And Then It Intersects With Horsepin Creek Road. And At That Intersection, You'll See Prolific Park. You'll See A Series Of A Mix Of Uses In This Area, Everything From Commercial High To Several Multifamily Zone Properties Which Are Located Along Horsepin Creek, As Well As To The West And Various Areas South Of Jessup Grove Road. So A Mix Of Uses In This Area. Also, To The South, You'll See The- Also, to the south, you'll see the Outer Loop I eight forty that runs to the south of this property. Also Caldwell Academy is located nearby. So I wanted to direct the commission's attention to the fact that this is a growing area, has been growing for many, many years, and certainly with the investment by our city in the infrastructure in this area, growth and development in this area are expected. Moving on, this is submitted to the commission for illustrative purposes. This shows the property boundary lines in the heavy or dark lines, including to the south of the green area. So you'll see the single access point off of Lewiston for this property. You'll see the residential lots that are laid out. And then you'll see a very large area that's shaded in green that is an area to be left undisturbed. That's a stream buffer and a wetland area. And our engineer Chuck Truby is here from C P T Engineering who prepared this and is prepared to address questions the commission may have about the layout. I think it's important for the commission to look at this with a certain lens in mind. We have tried to approach this project as good stewards of the land to be as efficient as possible in the layout of single-family detached homes to provide a density, a net density of three, approximately three units per acre, which roughly matches up with the other city developments or communities in the area. We'll see that in a few minutes. The upshot of this is that only thirty percent of this land will be built upon under the ordinance. Seventy percent of this land will be left as open space or unbuilt upon. And I think that's a very important factor for the commission to consider as you deliberate and as you review this, especially in light of the concerns that you may hear. Let me move on from there. These are some, another example of a community in the area that we found that were developed very similar density, and we wanted to point that out for comparison purposes to the commission. Again, this is another community, and you'll see to the south, to the northwest, a similar R three density community layout that's roughly similar here. These are representative samples of the construction or the materials, the designs that Will has in mind here. I know that your legal counsel probably say that disregard this, but the approximate square footage that we have in mind here is between three and four thousand square feet, or roughly thirty-five hundred square feet, three to thirty-five hundred, and the values are probably expected to be in the five to six hundred thousand range. Of course, there was an article in the newspaper the other day that the, I think, the median price of a single-family home in Greensboro right now is about three hundred thousand. So not unusual to see the price point here, but that is, of course, for illustrative purposes for the commission to consider. Another example of representative sample of a home that would be built in this development. We sent out a letter and to the owners within the radius according to the notification list provided to us, and we did have a neighborhood meeting. I would say there was vigorous discussion about the concerns that we heard. And of course, we added the condition about the access, no access off of Hackamore. You'll hear various concerns that were voiced at the meeting. We have had subsequent discussions with a few of the homeowners in the area, and this is an annexation, so it will go to City Council next month, and we will continue. The dialogue's not over, and we volunteered and offered to keep our lines of communication open, and we hope and expect to do that. We do have some letters from folks in the area who do not oppose this. We wanted to show that it's met with favorable reception from some owners in the area. So there's one, two, three, I believe, owners that have signed letters of no opposition. So a few points about the comprehensive plan and about this project. This is in growth tier one, and that's in the staff report. And that means that this is where our city has said that it expects development to occur. And it could be at a number of different types or styles. It could be at a number of different densities. Will and Chuck and their team looked at this property very closely, decided, looked at townhomes as a possibility here, looked at a variety of options and densities. And they determined that the highest and best use, the most efficient use, would be at a single-family detached at a net density of R three, which would match up well with other communities in the immediate area. And so while we appreciate the fact that it's in the county, now that there are properties on well and septic, this property is in growth tier one utilities. We have vetted that question. Water and sewer is available here. And the city contemplates this kind of development in this area, especially near major thoroughfares such as Horsepin Creek Road. We would submit to the commission that this proposal, this development, would provide a diversity in housing market, a variety of housing choices within walking distance of Horsepin Creek and various commercial and other uses, such as educational and recreational uses that you saw on the larger scope map, and that it is a very efficient use of land, which in our comprehensive plan, not sprawling out with development is an important concept. In other words, if we reduce this by twenty or thirty homes, those homes, there's a tremendous demand, as this commission may appreciate, for housing in our area. Those twenty or thirty homes are going to go somewhere. And so this is an efficient way to serve this area with school buses, with emergency services, with sanitation trucks, et cetera. So we submit this for your consideration. Our team is ready to answer any questions the commission may have, and we will stand by.
Are there any questions at this time? We have another twenty-eight seconds if somebody else would like to speak in support.
Thank you.
Seeing none, we have a total of ten minutes available for anyone who wants to speak in opposition. And as I said at the, if you'd come over and line up at the podium, we could facilitate the speaking. And as I mentioned at the outset of the meeting, if we have someone online, we'll take two speakers from the floor, and then we'll check to see if there's somebody online that wants to speak as well.
And Chair O'Connor, there's nobody online that I know.
Thank you. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Diane Stevio, and my address is forty-nine thirty Hackamore Road. Thank you all very much for the opportunity to speak with you this evening. My property is adjacent to the property in question, and I have lived there for twenty-seven years. I, along with the other residents in the area, who I will ask to stand at this time, am extremely concerned about this high-density zoning request and its severe departure from the character and density of the existing homes and neighborhoods. We are here to ask you to vote no to the C D R seven zoning. Thank you. We are not opposed to growth. We understand that we are located in a growth area according to the Greensboro Comprehensive Plan. What we are opposed to is unreasonable zoning that allows housing density incompatible with the area. Our properties sit on one or more acre lots. Taking the proposed property from low-density R forty zoning to the highest possible single-family zoning density of R seven, even with conditions, is an extreme departure from the land use in this area, creating a staggering seventy-three lots adjacent to property containing just sixteen. We've prepared a video to give you a visual understanding of the area. This video together because we wanted to give you an idea, a visual idea of, we're putting this video together because we wanted to give you an idea, a visual idea of why we're opposing the C D R seven zoning for this area. It's a rural area. We are currently headed south on Lewiston Road, headed towards Jessup Grove Road. This is Lake Higgins right here. We're coming up upon the land in question. You can see the sign under contract. So that is thirty-eight forty-nine, I believe it is, Lewiston Road. As you can see, the homes are on large lots with deep setbacks, as is the majority of the homes in this area. And we're coming up to my street Hackamore Road. There are a total of sixteen houses on this one-street neighborhood. This land is currently zoned R forty, and this street is essentially parallel to the proposed site plan. We're hoping to give you an idea of why we so strongly oppose the C D R seven zoning I hope that it's as obvious to you as it is to me in looking at this footage of what a dramatic and extreme change that would be. There is a better, more appropriate zoning density for this property, and we ask that you vote no to the current zoning request. Thank you. And this graphic just is intended to give you a visual example of the adjacent properties.
Could you get a little closer to the microphone?
Sorry, sorry. Yeah, this is meant to give you just a better understanding of the adjacent properties versus the proposed properties that are going in right behind us. We are requesting that this property be zoned to R three, which would require a minimum lot size of twelve thousand square feet versus five thousand square feet in R seven zoning. I would like to offer an opposing perspective on the zoning staff report analysis. Concerning land use compatibility, I disagree with their conclusion that the zoning request would allow uses that are, quote, "compatible with the general character of the area." The character of this area is low-density neighborhoods with large yards and open spaces. R seven lot sizes are not at all compatible. The twenty forty policy on creating great places that states Goal A, Strategy One, is to, quote, "protect and enhance the unique character of every neighborhood." R seven zoning neither protects nor enhances the unique character of our neighborhood, but rather threatens and diminishes it. The twenty forty map policies designates our areas urban general, stating that the development should, quote, "add additional appropriately scaled density." This zoning request is not adding appropriately scaled density. Concerning the twenty forty policy on building community connections, Goal E states that, quote, "everyone does their part to maintain stable, attractive, and healthy places to live and raise families." This zoning request diminishes the stability and attractiveness of this area, and because we're located in a watershed-critical area, has the potential to diminish the healthy aspects of the land. This zoning request is not in keeping with the Greensboro vision of being the greenest city in the South, nor is it in keeping with the twenty forty user guide, which states that development projects will, quote, "consider the larger context rather than focusing solely on individual sites." I ask that you consider the larger context of our neighborhood and the surrounding areas rather than one developer's site plan and limited vision for the property. I ask that you vote no to the current zoning request. There is a better solution.
Thank you. If you'd give your name and address, please.
Yes, my name is Emily Leonard, and I reside at forty-nine forty-two Hackamore Road. I wanted to touch briefly on community preferences and neighborhood choice from the G S O twenty forty plan. This plan states that forty-one percent of residents prefer suburban communities and larger lots. My family, my husband, myself, and our four young children chose Greensboro for this very reason. We wanted a large yard and lots of space for our kids to run around in. Greensboro beat out several other highly sought-after southeastern cities in which we had an opportunity to settle. We love the lot sizes and rural feel of this area and Greensboro's emphasis on green spaces and parks, the great traffic, and schools. There is vigorous demand for larger lots like the one that we purchased recently. We experienced a lot of difficulty finding a home like this one due to low inventory. We did not want to live in a neighborhood with houses crammed next to each other like this proposal. We watched many homes with over one-acre lots go under contract before we could see them. There absolutely is a demand for this type of housing. G S O twenty forty also discusses prioritizing sustainability and environmental stewardship. This site is in a watershed-critical area tier three, where low-density requirements are established to protect our water supplies. They play a crucial role in maintaining water quality in a region already under threat of contamination from airport runoff. Contamination only gets worse as the density of development increases. Responsible development near watershed-critical areas is paramount for ensuring long-term sustainability. I ask that you don't ruin the very thing that attracts great folks to our area. Let's have the foresight to keep Greensboro moving forward with responsible development that maintains the allure and charm that brings people to Greensboro in the first place. I request that you vote no to this high-density zoning request. Thank you all for your time this evening.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Karen Jessup Sawyer, and I live at thirty-eight forty-seven Lewiston Road. I would like to give you all a little history of the area surrounding the proposed properties. I'm a Jessup, born and raised in this area. My grandparents developed this land, had eight children. They used this land for farming, raising farm animals, and gardening. My grandparents' home still stands across the road from my house. The legacy of the Jessups' name is seen within our communities such as Jessup Grove Road and the church that was once named Jessup Grove Baptist Church. This land has been in our family for as long as I can remember, at least a hundred years. As our family passes on, we knew at some point it would be sold and developed. When the development disclosed, there would be seventy-plus homes on one-eighth acre lots. Us neighbors were totally shocked. Me and two other family members' properties are going to be the most affected by this subdivision. There will be no privacy. We will be looking at the backsides of seven to eight homes. This development could potentially cause our home property to not be worth as much. The biggest issue is that the new development will not look like it fits into our neighborhood. Let me ask the committee, why do we need to rezone these properties into such a high-density level when there is much more reasonable zoning level of R three? Also, I have to ask, is this responsible development? I am a member of this community by birthright and neighbor by choice. When I chose to build my home in two thousand and seven, we don't want seventy-plus houses packed into twelve acres. Our wish is the committee will respect the land, keep it within the character of the family's land, and respect the community my family has helped build. Please vote no to the current zoning request. R three zoning would fit into our community, build responsibly, build with respect to my neighbors, and build with respect to the environment. Thank you.
Thank you. We have thirty-seven seconds remaining. If anybody has a last comment.
Could I make another comment?
You have thirty-seven seconds.
Okay.
If you'd give your name and address.
Okay. Diane Stevio, forty-nine thirty Hackamore Road. I just wanted to point out that there are a couple of ways to think about R three. One is in terms of homes per acre.
and the others in terms of square footage per home lot. So when you think about R three and what they're able to do, they're packing homes in because they're getting, they're going down to seventy-six. They're restricted by the watershed-critical area. And the lot size will be five thousand square feet under R seven versus twelve thousand square feet under R three. Thank you.
Thank you. We have up to five minutes of rebuttal time for the applicant or anyone in support of the application. If you'd remind us of your name and address.
Thank you, Madam Chair. It's Mark Isaacson at eight oh four Green Valley Road. You all have your, the book list that I handed out, and I think the page with the illustrative sketch plan may be the most appropriate page to look at in our comments here in rebuttal. I think we're actually sort of on the same page as a lot of the comments that are the opposition made to you. I think it's a question of how you look at it. And it's, what set of lenses do you have on, for example? So our comprehensive plan, rather than thinking, looking at how people may feel about this project, I think the commission is to be guided by the comprehensive plan principles. And so when we talk about protecting and enhancing or appropriately scaling this or preserving green space, I would ask that the commission look at the illustrative sketch plan and look at the significant green space that is being preserved with this plan. On the other hand, if this were developed as sort of a generic R three development, a lot of that preserved area would be removed and would be no more. So Will Yerns and his engineers and his group are experienced with this, have looked at this land very carefully, I think thoughtfully, and considered how to best develop this property, provide some much-needed housing in this area. There's tremendous demand here. I think you heard the phrase "low inventory." I think that's almost acknowledged here these days in the real estate, residential real estate world. How to make this a sustainable and reasonable community that will preserve and protect a number of areas on the property. I would submit to the commission that, and Chuck Trubey, our engineer is here to address this, there will be significant stormwater controls to control any water, stormwater runoff. We're responsible for containing that stormwater runoff on our property. And that entire area, along with other common areas, will be deeded into and managed by a member, a homeowner-managed homeowners association. So it will be dedicated to, under a site plan, an HOA which will own it and maintain it, will not be owned by any individual homeowner. So with that, would make our team available for any questions that the commission may have, and submit to you that this is a reasonable density. It's net R three. And so we've, I think, submitted a very reasonable layout that preserves seventy percent of this property as open space and preserved area. So only thirty percent is being built upon. Happy to answer any questions that the commission may have, and we appreciate your consideration.
Do we have any questions at this time?
I have a question.
Ms. Maggott?
Regarding the properties thirty-eight forty-seven and forty-nine oh eight, which butt right up to the area that isn't this green area, has there been any discussions about buffers or any kind of arrangements made with the neighbors to provide some kind of a barrier?
We did, Ms. Maggott. We did offer to work out a buffer arrangement with any property owner that abuts this property that does not have that green shaded area as a buffer already that will be preserved. And that offer certainly stands, and we look forward to further discussions about that between now and the time that the city council considers this matter.
That wasn't in the conditions.
Any other questions at this time? Ms. Gaines?
This might be a question for Mr. Truby, and I'm playing what-ifs here. You're sitting here on twenty-four acres, and they keep saying they want R three. Well, if you utilize this green space that you've set aside, and you've got twenty-four acres to deal with, you could get about how many single-family homes on this twenty-four acres?
My name's Chuck Truby. I'm an engineer, president of CPT Engineering, and I reside at five oh two Way Cross Drive here in Greensboro. We still have, because we're in the watershed-critical area, the thirty percent built-upon limitation really controls how many lots we could get on there. So that is kind of what drove, number one, is it drove the layout, because what we've tried to do is we took the areas that had steep slopes and stream buffers, and we took that area and preserved it as open space. And so where we're actually building is where the old farm field is. Very few, if you look, if we could go back to the aerial photograph that we showed there, you can see that there was an old farm there. Pretty much all the new development is on the farmland. So all the, most of the existing trees, other than for the construction of the stormwater control measure and a few isolated trees, most of the existing trees are going to remain. So, and what our ordinances try to do is they encourage us to cluster, to compact the development and preserve open space because it's better for water quality. And again, we're going to have a stormwater control measure. And I know the contrast of what you saw for the subdivision to the south versus our subdivision is, number one, our subdivision has water and sewer, okay? And because of the cost to install water and sewer, again, it encourages to cluster the development. You could never run, it would be very difficult and very costly to run sewer through a subdivision with acre lots because the length of the sewer that you would have to put in to sewer those lots would get so expensive, it almost becomes impossible. So it is really two different types of developments. You have a development on Hackamore that was done under county rules with no sanitary sewer, no water. It's all well and septic. And you're, and you're in the watershed-critical area, so you're forced to do big lots versus doing a city-type subdivision where it's compacted more because it's done under more urban regulations. And that's, that's why we're here. And that's why you see the contrast in the two layouts. And it's, the water and sewer plays a big role in this, and then the stormwater control measures. And the subdivision to the south of us, they don't, there's no stormwater control measures in that subdivision. And it's on septic. So I would almost make the argument from a water quality standpoint that with the compact development with city sewer, so if a septic system fails or something like that, you don't have that issue with a city subdivision. So you can almost make the argument that both subdivisions have their, both of them are good for water quality. I'm not saying that the urban-dense one is worse. And I'm not saying that the one with well and septic is better, okay? And it's just two different types of developments. But our property is very close to the city limits, as Mark has shown. I mean, we actually abut the city limits. But the development that's gone on along Jessup Grove and Horse Pen Creek, this is just an expansion of the city out into an area that is more rural. So that's why we're here the way we are. And I'm happy to answer any other questions about that. But it's the water and sewer that make it look more compact. And it's driven by that type of development.
Any other questions at this time? Still have a minute thirty-seven seconds for rebuttal if there's anyone else in favor of the application.
Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. We have five minutes available for rebuttal time. For anyone in opposition? And if you'd identify yourself again.
Sure. Diane Stevie of forty-nine thirty Hackamore Road. I'm a little shocked to hear, we were shocked to learn that the applicant is actually developing the property and not building the homes. He's known for building a home builder, and I think that's how he was described here tonight. But he's not building the homes. He's developing the property, and I would argue has a very short-term interest in what happens with this particular area. I would also want to mention that we keep talking about it being sort of very close to R three, and it's really not. In R seven, the way I understand it, the lot sizes have to be five thousand square feet, and in R three, they're twelve thousand square feet. Finally, I would just like to talk a little bit about this particular area of Lewiston Road because I know it has become sort of popular with growth. But while the area along Lewiston Road from Fleming Road to Bridleton Ridge has become a popular area for development, the particular property we're discussing lies in an area between Jessup Grove Road, which is the county line in Lake Higgins, a total distance of less than one mile. If you're driving down Lewiston Road from Fleming Road, you'll pass several planned areas of development and some established neighborhoods. But once you cross Jessup Grove Road, it's like entering the countryside. The first thing you'll see is a large white beautiful horse barn and horses grazing on the left. The next street is My Street Hackamore Road. While a more densely populated housing community like the one proposed has its place in other areas of the Lewiston Road and the larger area in general, it is not a fit within this very small, vibrant community. In the city's quest to meet the growing housing need, we ask that you consider these small gems, these small longstanding established communities such as ours, as an opportunity to meet the housing needs of families such as Emily's, who choose to, who chose to move to Greensboro to raise their families in homes on larger lots with room for children to run around and be close with nature.
Thank you.
Emily Leonard, forty-nine forty-two Hackamore Road. I just wanted to touch on a few points quickly. The map that Mr. Isaacson showed that was zoomed in and showed the different mixed-use developments, those were over a mile away. So also the walkability factor, I don't know how much that plays into it, but I don't consider over a mile away walkable. The line is at Jessup Grove, right there. So we are close to the line, but you can't keep moving the line further and further. There has to be a line somewhere. He didn't show north of the property in that mixed-use map. It just all showed the south and east of the property. To answer your question, Commissioner Maggitt, the land is in a watershed-critical Tier Three, so only thirty percent can be buildable, impervious surfaces. This is maximizing profits, essentially. They put the maximum number of lots that they could possibly put on the property. They can't develop, they can't put impervious surfaces on that seventy percent. That's why. You can't, because it's in a watershed-critical area Tier Three. Also, just to echo Diane, we were told on the Zoom that he is just the developer. He was not the builder. He did not have a builder in mind. They would sell it to a builder.
Could we pause the speaker's clock for just a moment? I apologize, ma'am. I wanted to address it at the end of the comments, but matters of who rather than what really are not within the purview of the board's discussion. I certainly don't want to cut you off, but I just want you to be aware that I'm going to advise on that.
Okay, okay. It was just correcting an error, maybe, or maybe that's new information that we didn't know. But this, I'm just telling you what we were told in the Zoom. So yeah, I think that, so it's basically seventy-three lots on about twelve acres. So, and our houses are sixteen houses, and we're each about one or two acres each. So I think it just makes a difference in terms of what you're talking about. Thank you.
Thank you. We have fifty-four seconds. If there's anybody else in opposition. If not, then we will close the public hearing. Do we have any questions or comments from commissioners?
It was a cold day Sunday. It wasn't snowing. I will only say this. My wife is thirty-eight weeks pregnant, and we are expecting our next child a week from today. Our daughter is, as of today, nineteen months old. To give her some relief, I packed my daughter up on Sunday and drove out Bryan Boulevard to, and obviously the opposite way, because I watched the video, and I thought, wow, this place is really out in the middle of nowhere. But I came in from the other direction, and I went through two traffic signals to get there. And so I take that, you know, and sort of, I'm looking at that as I drive by all of the stuff on Lewiston. I get out there, I park. I get out the stroller because Emma's nineteen months old and can't walk. And I walk down the bush-hogged path that they had driven down to the end, mind you. And there's a tree, I don't know who owns the land right now, but there's a tree, I can't drive down there. I had to actually walk with the stroller. And if you know how bushhogs work, they had done it this way, which was the way where you go down the hill. Going back up the hill with the stroller was a lot more difficult. I'll just say that. Often the distance as I'm walking back, I see two people walking towards me. You know, zoning commissioners, we never quite know what we're going to have happen when we were out on a site visit. And I ran into very kind people, the Blake family, as I was walking back. And they gave me some of the history of the area, specifically their family's involvement in it, the house up on the corner that had been apparently used for fire practice that, you know, now somebody may be developing as well. So a lot of interest in this area. As I looked at this land, I, you know, I'm just going to say this. I had the same sort of thought that Mr. Isaacson spoke about earlier, which was, should this be townhomes or should it be single-family homes? And the reason I say that is it is topographically challenged. And typically with that, you would want to have some form of HOA involved just because you've got things you have to maintain that are not, you know, normal. I mean, I just, way to say it. We have a housing crisis here in Greensboro. And to me, I feel like this works for the area, given what, you know, is up Lewiston. There are more dense developments on Lewiston. There's some RM twelve up there that we saw. My feeling is you all should continue to talk. You've got about another thirty days. I'm going to vote to support this this evening. My hope is you'll continue the conversation, and you may come to some better conclusions as you come along. I mean, I do want you to know that your emails were heard, and I walked all twenty-four acres. And so I see both visions of this. The Blakes were actually very even in the way they explained it. I know we've got two letters of support. They saw both sides of this. But I do think we need the housing. So in that regard, I'm going to support it this evening. And I'll let, you know, working out the developer and all of that stuff happen outside of here. Again, this is an annexation. It will have another lay of approval. So that's where I'm at tonight.
This is Commissioner Maggitt. I agree completely with Commissioner Engel. And I hope that there will be conversations about protective buffers, you know, wonderful huge trees that will be there to block this development. But we need this housing tremendously. It's really important for the city of Greensboro. So I'll be voting in favor.
And, well, I wasn't going to say anything, but I will say I drove in the area on Saturday, and I, your neighborhood is beautiful, very historic value. I also saw that south of that is the Crimson Wood Road, and it's a combination of probably what will be happening. But I see the bigger context is that, of course, we need the homes. And I believe this project is very thoughtful and intentional. I do not believe it will diminish the beauty or the attractiveness of the area because you have the HOA. But I will encourage consistent communication. And I will also add, I appreciate the emails. I saw your emails, Ms. Stevie and Ms. Leonard, and all of you really appreciate your thoughtfulness. And I think to move this along even forward, I will be supporting this, but it's not to say that your voice was not heard, very much heard. And I please continue the conversation. But this is something that the- But this is something that the city really needs, so thank you.
Mr. Egbert?
Yes, want to make a motion if we're there?
I have a question if I, if no one else has a comment.
I have a comment before.
Go ahead, Mr. Gilmer.
I too would be supporting the development. I think it's well-planned out, it's well-done, and I'd like to commend the developer, I'd like to thank the community for voicing their opinion, and we hear you. But I think it's a good development, and one of the best we've seen in a while out there, so thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to ask staff to just give us a little clarification or insight about this tier-three watershed. Is it enhanced by the fact that it would be aided with city water and sewer? And if we have the restriction about the 30%, obviously that's being observed, and so it's doing what it's supposed to do. So where are we with the watershed?
I will speak to some of that. I'm not an expert on some of this, so I will do my best. So it was noted that being in that tier-three watershed critical area, there's a limitation on built-upon area. So whatever development comes in, there'll be a limit on how much impervious surface, so your driveways, your structures, those things on there with that. The, some of that, there's a stream buffer there that you'll have to stay out of regardless of the type of development you do. So that's also a factor in this discussion. I think beyond that, you know, as a general rule, if you're introducing smaller lots, it gives more flexibility to preserve open space than you may have with individual lots, because certain pieces of the property become in common ownership, as mentioned earlier, with the HOA being in charge of that area versus individual lots and individual people making decisions about cutting down trees and doing structures and those kind of things as well. This is going to be addressed during site plan review at the end of the day, to make sure that they are meeting all of these requirements, regardless of what comes in as far as the development goes. When you're talking about these areas that, when you're talking about water and sewer, obviously from a public health and safety standpoint, that does promote that, because you are on existing systems that are maintained, you don't have to worry so much about the runoff and some of the other issues that you might with a well and septic field on there. But again, I am not the expert for water resources, so I'm not going to delve too much further into that, but I will say that these issues will all be addressed as part of site plan review.
One of the challenges you have when you develop out in an area like this is the septic has to perk. They can only build to a level at which that would happen. I know you, you obviously in real estate know this, but the thing that I also consider tonight when I think about this is, if there is a concern with density of housing and the water table, for instance, the fact that it's on city water means you don't have more people tapping into well and the water table out there, which to me is a benefit, so.
Yeah, I appreciated all the communication and the care, and I also understand the significance of changing lot sizes in a community where they're huge, partly because of the well and septic conditions, but also just because of the flavor of the development. But I feel that this particular project as infill is appropriate, and it's certainly necessary, as some other commissioners have pointed out. And I believe that this particular developer is somebody who will continue to communicate with the local community so that we can move forward with this, but I will be supporting it.
I do have a question, Madam Chair.
Yes.
I know Mr. Isaacson mentioned about the buffers that the neighbors still had the opportunity for. Is there a, how long do they have to make a decision if they are allowed to have those buffers, or do we know if that still is on the table, as it looks like we're going to be moving forward with an approval?
So this is a conditional zoning application.
Okay.
Which means additional conditions can be added throughout the process prior to the final vote, and of course, this is going to go to City Council, because it's an annexation piece on there. So it's really up to the applicant and the other folks to kind of talk through.
Okay.
If there are conditions that make it make sense, and they can be added to that as part of the hearing process when it goes to City Council. Any condition has to be more restrictive than what currently exists and cannot duplicate any standard of the ordinance.
All right, thank you.
Anyone care to make a motion? Mr. Gilmer, did you have a comment?
Something kind of jumped out at me. I heard a comment about the areas being contaminated from runoff from the airport. And I know we're not supposed to consider that, but that just kind of jumped out at me. Can you kind of speak on that? I heard that comment. Okay. Oh, no, no.
Yeah, the public hearing part's closed. I don't know that I can speak to that at this point.
Okay.
I'd have to get other technical staff to speak to anything as far as impact goes.
Right, okay.
And that would, again, would be addressed as part of site plan review.
Right, I understand, but it kind of jumped out at me.
There's a lot published on that, a lot of it has to do with fire suppression, and Mitchell Water Treatment Plan is typically impacted by it, so they can, the water department
And Mr. Gilmer, if you can just get a little closer to the microphone when you're talking, we just had a hard time hearing you.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion. Oh.
No, not for that.
Oh. I'd like to make a motion for agenda item Z2402008. The Greensboro Planning and Zoning Commission believes that its action to recommend approval of the original zoning request for the properties at 3849 Lewiston Road and a portion of 1908 ZZ Hackamore Road from County RS40 Residential Single Family to City CDR7, Conditional District Residential Single Family 7, to be consistent with the adopted GSO 2040 Comprehensive Plan and considers the action taken to be reasonable and in the public interest for the following reasons. The request is consistent with the Comprehensive Plan's future built form map and future land use map. The proposed City CDR7 zoning district as condition permits that, permits uses that fit the context of surrounding areas and limits negative impact on the adjacent properties. The request is reasonable due to the size, physical conditions, and other attributes of the area. It would benefit the property owner and the surrounding community, and its approval is in the public interest.
Second, Commissioner Magid.
Thank you, Mr. Downing and Ms. Magid. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Is anyone opposed? Okay, this constitutes a favorable recommendation and is subject to a public hearing at the Tuesday, March 19th, 2024 City Council meeting. Thank you. Appreciate the conversation. And we have one more item on our agenda. That is item Z2402011. A rezoning request, excuse me, a rezoning request from O Office and CM Commercial Medium to CDCM, Conditional District Commercial Medium, for the property identified as 814 Summit Avenue, generally described as southeast of Summit Avenue and southwest of Sullivan Street, .89 acres. Mr. Kirkman?
Thank you, Chair. Let's just get this going here. Okay, so again, the request is to rezone from Office and Commercial Medium to CDCM, Conditional District Commercial Medium, for the property identified as 814 Summit Avenue, generally described as southeast of Summit Avenue and southwest of Sullivan Street, .89 acres. Mr. Kirkman?
Thank you, Chair. Let's just get this going here. Okay, so again, the request is to rezone from Office and Commercial Medium to CDCM, Conditional District Commercial Medium. North of the request is currently zoned CM and O Office. East of the request is zoned Office and RM12 Residential Multifamily. South and west of the request are zoned Office. Subject property current contains a vacant eating and drinking establishment with drive-through facility. North of the request contains retail sales and a shopping center use. East requests are multifamily dwellings and single-family dwellings. South request contains a religious assembly use and a single-family dwelling. West request is a multifamily use. The image, this image here shows the subject property as it's seen from Summit Avenue. This image shows the subject property as seen from Sullivan Street. This shows a retail sales use located north of the request on Summit Avenue, zoned CM. This image shows a shopping center located further north of the request, zoned CM. These are single-family dwellings located east of the subject property, zoned Office. These are multifamily dwellings located northeast of the subject property, zoned RM12. These are other multifamily dwellings located east of the request on Sullivan Street, zoned RM12. So, single-family dwelling located south of the request on Park Avenue, zoned Office. This is an office use located south of the request on Summit Avenue, zoned Office. These are multifamily uses located west of the request, zoned Office. This is a view facing northeast on Summit Avenue, the subject property is on the right. This is a view facing southwest on Summit Avenue, the subject property is on the left. This is a view facing on Sullivan Street, the subject property here is on your right. And this is a view facing Sullivan Street on the left, or excuse me, Sullivan Street moving west, the subject property is on your left. This is a conditional zoning application. These are the three conditions that are associated with the request. GSO 2040 Comprehensive Plan does these properties urban in general and the future built form map and commercial on the future land use map. Staff has concluded the zoning request does support the Comprehensive Plan's growing economic competitiveness, big idea, to build a prosperous, resilient economy that creates equitable opportunities to succeed, and supports the Comprehensive Plan's failure in our framework goal to arrange our land uses for where we live, work, attend school, shop, and enjoy our free time to create a more vibrant and livable Greensboro. Proposed CDCM district allows uses that are compatible with existing varied commercial and office uses surrounding the request, and addresses a previous non-conforming situation that has existed for some time on the property. Staff is recommending approval of the request. I can answer any questions.
Any questions? Thank you, Mr. Kirkman. The applicant has up to 10 minutes. If you'd identify yourself with your name and address, please.
My name is Gary Wolf. I'm an attorney in Greensboro at 301 North Elm Street. I represent Cookout Restaurants, which is the owner of this property. Cookout was established in Greensboro in 1989 and currently has 330 restaurants in 10 states. So I've given you, what I gave, handed up to you all was in your package, but I wanted you to see a larger version of it. If you'll go to the 11 by 17 page, you'll see the lot that we have. The northern portion of that lot is zoned commercial, and on that lot for 40 years was a fast food restaurant with a drive-through. The parking lot for the Mrs. Winters was on the southern piece, and it was zoned Office. We didn't find out about the need for a rezoning, unfortunately, until after we bought the property. Our engineer didn't get that answer from the city until after we had bought. But we still think the fact that it was an existing use for all those years, it should be approved. We could have renovated this building, but I don't think anybody in the area wants to see that old Mrs. Winters sitting there. So what I've shown you is a drawing, is a picture of our most recent Reevesville-built restaurant, which was finished in July. It's for illustrative purposes, but that is the very building that you see on this site plan, both in terms of colors and materials and size. The new building is staying on the northern parcel, just like the Mrs. Winters building. The only difference to the parking lot, which was Office, is we've put the dumpster corral in the right rear corner, whereas under the previous use, it was in the very back of the commercial lot, almost at Park Avenue. But now it's in a corral up front. The new layout will also require additional landscaping along the road, consistent with the Summit Avenue plan. You'll also see on the plan that there is ADA-compliant crosswalks leading from the sidewalk up to the building. The walk-up window on this restaurant is at the patio island, right at the front of the hammerhead of the building. So when you walk across the front of the drive-throughs, you're at the walk-up window. We sent a neighborhood communication out to 80 different owners in the area. That included sending it to our competitors across the street, which would have been an Arby's, a Wendy's, and a Sonic. I did not have any comments until today. I did speak to the owner of the Carolina Peacemaker, which is across the street. I personally know her, and she had no problem. She basically said to me, it's fast food to fast food, so why is there a problem? I do know that we have some objections from somebody in the neighborhood. David Wharton is here, and he'll speak to this. But I would submit to you that all we're doing is improving an existing use, and I don't think any of the plans for Summit Avenue in terms of its streetscape or its, the Summit Avenue plan contemplated taking an existing restaurant with a drive-through and either downzoning it or making it a non-conforming use. It's been a restaurant with a drive-through for 40 years, and we think this is an appropriate change to comply with what the city requested, to make the office parking lot also a part of the zoning. If you have any questions?
Do we have any questions? Ms. Skeens?
Mr. Wolf, just clarification. We made some changes when we did the LDO. At one point in time, as I recall, and help me, Mr. Kirkman, like the old hams on Friendly, that back portion was zoned residential, but it was a parking lot for hams. Now it's got to be consistent zoning. If, whatever the main building is, any adjoining area used for parking has to be zoned similarly to the building, correct?
Yes. The provision, as I recall, in the Unified Development Ordinance was you could go a certain distance into residential zoning if it was adjacent to a commercial use with a special use permit. And we've had several of those that have come through over the years. But under the Land Development Ordinance, which is adopted in 2010, that was not an option. All the parking that is associated with the use would need to be on the same zoned, in the same zoning classification. And that's the situation here. I'm not completely clear how we got to this point, where part of it was zoned commercial, part of it was zoned Office, but when the current proposal came in, they were moving the existing building and rebuilding. That triggered the discussion about the non-conforming situation, and that's what the zoning is addressing this evening, or is trying to address.
So to clarify, we are here because they're tearing down the existing building, they're building new, which then puts everything under the auspices of the current LDO, which required the zoning to take place to be in conformity with the new ordinances as of 2012.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
But keep in mind, we're not residential next door. I mean, I heard you talk about going into residential use.
Well, I was talking about the old hams.
Yeah, those were residential homes at one point, but I believe the, the next-door neighbor, which is a social group of some kind, Summit, I can't remember what it was called, it was converted from residence, I believe, in 1968. So some of those, those office uses along that road predate even the Mrs. Winters.
I just wanted to clarify that we are here because of
Correct.
Changes to the development ordinance.
Correct.
So as far as the use of the site, it's not changing.
Correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you. Is anybody else, we have another 5 minutes 57 seconds if anyone wants to speak in favor. Seeing not them, we have up to 10 minutes available for anyone who's opposed. If you'd give your name and address, please. If you'd give your name and address, please.
Sorry to make your evening longer.
Yes, the computer is playing with me apparently. Apparently, I don't understand. Yeah, let's see if that's just open screen maybe on that side.
Sorry to make you wait. My name is David Wharton. I live at 667 Percy Street. I am the current president of the Dunleith Neighborhood Association, formerly the ACOG neighborhood. I've lived there for 30 years. Mrs. Skenes and Mr. Wolf will also remember that I served on the Citizens Advisory Team from 2005 to 2010, writing the current LDO. And more recently, I served on the Advisory Committee for the Greensboro 2040 Plan as well. So more relevant to today's proposal, I participated in creating the strategic plan for the ACOG neighborhood. You see the cover on the left. It's now called Dunleith in 2003, which was adopted as an official planning document in November of that year. And as a member of my neighborhood's Board of the Directors in the 20 years since. And that is a registered 501(c)(3) organization. We've been around for a while. We have been working very steadily with Cindy Planning and Transportation on staff on implementing that plan for the past 20 years. And the property under question today is included in that plan. And in fact, if you look at the GSO 2040 zoning map, you'll see that there is, there are actually two neighborhood plans that apply to this property. In 2006, we worked with the city to develop the Summit Avenue Corridor Plan. You see the cover of that on the right. I have a copy here. I'll just pass it if you want to have a look at it. Didn't have enough ink to do copies for you all. That plan makes specific infrastructure and zoning recommendations, and I have to correct Mr. Wolf there, in that there are proposed, there is proposed zoning that would make this a non-conforming use. And I'll show you that in just a minute. That was adopted by City Council in 2006. And of course, it went through the Planning Commission as well. So it too is an official city planning document. In 2008, the city planned a, the city of Greensboro passed a $7.5 million bond issue to make significant traffic, streetscape and pedestrian infrastructure improvements on Summit. And you've seen some of them tonight. This is what they, just a little piece of it. That was based on the Summit Corridor Plan that I just gave to you. So we have continued to use that as a planning document. Shortly after that bond issue though, 2008 came along and the whole housing market crashed. And we got back Bernard for many years until 2015, when we, our neighborhood put considerable public pressure to revive the plan. And it did get going again when the city had some money. So since 2015, we've made progress on these infrastructure improvements, including the landscape meeting that you see here. This actually, you can see Mrs. Winters' chicken right there on the right. That, that came in just last year. And we have a much improved pedestrian environment. And we'll soon be installing pedestrian scaled decorative lighting on Summit, including at this intersection. And we're about to spend a couple hundred thousand dollars of a municipal service district budget to put in some gateway features that are also part of this plan. So both the strategic plan for the neighborhood, you can see the crosswalks here we've done to improve the pedestrian environment. The strategic plan for the neighborhood and the Summit Corridor Plans make specific recommendations not only for infrastructure, but also for zoning that are pretty much completely at odds with what's being proposed to you today. I can find nothing in them that would support the approval of a drive-through fast food restaurant. And I will say this, Mrs. Winters has been there for a long time. It's been kind of a sleepy little, it's sort of a Model T of a drive-through. Mostly it's a walk-up restaurant. It's because the food wasn't that great. I will say Cookout has a great product. And we've seen the lines going into, the cars waiting to get into Cookout further up Summit Avenue. So we're, we're actually looking at it, going from a Model T to a Dodge Charger level of auto intensity here. So anyhow, let me, let me tell you, show you some of the recommendations. First, from the strategic plan for the ACOG neighborhood. And there you can see the map that goes all the way up to Bessemer. So that includes this, this intersection as well. For improving the Summit Corridor, it calls us to encourage appropriate land use in architecturally compatible buildings. It's a nice generic building Cookout has there, but it's, it really has nothing to do with the rest of, the rest of Summit or the, especially the historic district, which is part of the neighborhood. It calls for historic architecture and scale. It says, it calls to preserve the historic architecture and scale of, of ACOG, now Dunleith, and encourage a compatible blend of old and new structures. Seek compatible sympathetic designs for commercials, structures. Now, there's nothing wrong with the Cookout Building as a, as a drive-through. It's a pretty nice looking one, but it is not compatible with what's there on Summit. It also calls for the neighborhood to be walkable. And we, the city has just spent $7.5 million to make it more walkable. Preserve and enhance a pedestrian-friendly environment. Maintain and improve the network of neighborhood sidewalks and increase opportunities for safe, attractive crosswalks. I'm going to tell you, there's no way you can rev up auto intensity and also have enhanced pedestrian-friendly environment. That's from the strategic plan. This is from the Summit Corridor Plan, which I just gave to you. It actually recommends specific regulatory frameworks that is zoning, which has not happened yet. But it says here, for recommendation number one, and there are a bunch of others. Apply low-intensity mixed-use district, residential, office and retail to both sides of the 800 block. Existing offices here would be accommodated nicely by such a district. Appropriately designed retail uses would be a convenience to area residents and provide a suitable transition to the more intensive retail north. I'll tell you, there's a lot of multifamily housing in here. There's A&amp;T has got a lot of multifamily housing. It's a, it's a great opportunity for an intensive pedestrian environment. We are all for more commercial intensity, as long as it's street level. We would, you know, a multi-story building, two-story building with pedestrian-oriented retail below and offices or, or housing above would be fantastic. And here you can see on the Summit Avenue Corridor Plan what the, you know, the, the map here, the red part of the map calls for this mixed-use, low-intensity zoning. Now, I feel like our neighborhood has held up our end of the bargain in pushing the infrastructure forward, but we have not yet pushed for the regulatory environment. I will say on page 22 of the, of the plan, it calls for the City of Greensboro Planning Department to do that. They have not as yet done that. But I will say, after tonight, we will be in talks with City Council and planning staff to start making that happen. No matter what your determination is, we feel like this kind of use creeping down Summit is going, could be a real problem for us. In that document too, it talks about what are some of the unwanted things that the plan doesn't want. Rampant speeding, and I got to say, we've had a terrible problem since the pandemic with really loud cars. Maybe you have noticed this as well. And this is going to draw more car traffic toward our neighborhood. What we want is for the neighborhood to be a special place, right? When you enter, and this is the entrance point. And again, Cookout's a great product, but there's, there's lots of them around that, there's nothing special that says Greensboro or Dunleith neighborhood by a Cookout. There are going to be lots of cars and we, what we don't want are uses that generate outside lighting, noise, traffic incompatible with nearby residences. And we're, we're going to have that. I'm, I'm going to skip ahead a little because I'm running out of time. I'm going to skip over why I think the six big ideas actually, almost all of them are against this. I will just say, I want to point out a couple of things. The property, here's the property here. Over here, up here, we have what's known as St. Leo's Place. It's a retirement community for low and moderate income people. And we have this area here, Fifth Avenue, which is not part of our historic district, but has undergone a wonderful renaissance of, I would say, small individual investors redoing their houses. And here we've got all this multifamily where you could have people walk up to a pedestrian-oriented business here. And is, is it like sustainable to say, no, if you want to go to Cookout, you know, you're going to drive there? I don't think so. Anyhow, this is what St. Leo's looks like. It was done by George Carr many years ago. He does fantastic tax credit projects. And those, those people, I think, are going to like their peace and quiet. It's a, it's a half a block away from this Cookout. And this is an indication of some of the housing that's going on in Fifth. That's the inside of Mrs. Winters' chicken. And I will say, last thing, I looked for the zoning sign at this property when I first heard of it. And I didn't see it. The zoning sign is supposed to be up there for 10 to 20 days. I never saw it until the second time I walked the site, I saw it lying on the ground. And I'm going to say, Mr. Wolf could have called us up. We would, I, we would be happy to have a meeting with him about this. I asked him earlier if he wanted to have one. He said, no.
Thank you. We have five minutes of rebuttal time, if the applicant would care.
I don't have time to speak with you for ten minutes.
We will have rebuttal time in a few moments. Thank you. If you'd identify yourself again, please.
Yes, Gary Wolf, attorney at 301 North Elm Street. I did serve with Mr. Wharton on the current, current ordinance. I've known him for 20-some years. He's been consistent for 20-some years, I must say. He's admitted that the regulatory framework is not there. And we are an existing commercial use on the corner. And we were valid under the prior ordinance. And we were looking to, to basically rezone the parking lot so we can continue an existing use. And I would argue to you, if they put the regulatory framework in and decide to make the restaurant there a non-conforming use, it will almost surely, surely constitute a taking of the property. We are right at the perimeter. We're right next door to the driveway coming out of Summit Shopping Center. I understand it's at the entrance to the road, but it's, as he perceives it with the landscaping plan. But that restaurant's been there for 40 years. And it is surrounded by almost exclusively office uses. I understand from him, and, and when we sent out the notices, I understand that the other parallel road on his side of Summit is all residential. But I think everything on our side of Summit is almost exclusively offices. Other than when you get further back in there, you get A&amp;Ts residential housing back in there. But I think the next street over has predominantly residential houses that have been converted to office uses. So we would ask respectfully for this to be rezoned and the use to stay consistent with what it's been for 40 years.
Thank you. There's three minutes remaining if anyone else wants to speak in favor of the application. Seeing none, then we have up to five minutes of rebuttal time for anyone in opposition. You're double dipping tonight. If you'd give your name and address, please.
Thank you. My name is Michael Gallagani. I live at 1305 Summit Avenue. I do own property in the Dunleith area. I did not receive any information from the current participant on the change that they want to make to the property in question. There is a Cookout further up Summit Avenue closer to my house. Every morning I see piles of paper bags, cups. I'd really hate to see that happen to the Dunleith area. They do have standards there, which I got to follow for my property there. And so far, I haven't seen any improvements to that Cookout. There is a lot of trash that ends up there. There was actually a video on YouTube about that particular restaurant at one time. I'm, I'm not going to go any further than that, but it wasn't very pretty. But I'm not sure what's going to happen to the existing Cookout there. And that's what really I'm interested about. I didn't hear anything of what may be happening. Is there going to be two of these restaurants on Summit Avenue? I mean, are they going to be, one going to be closing and then they're going to have to rezone the old one? And that's, that's why I'm trying to say, I'm, I'm against it at this point. I haven't heard anything of what's going to happen to the old one. Is it two different owners? Is it the same owner? Is it a, a, other type of business arrangement there? But that's, that's why I'm saying, please reconsider it. There, there's another one down the street. What's going to happen to that property now? And I know it's a high-density commercial area, but I just don't hate, hate to see that happen to the Dunleith area. Thank you.
Thank you. We have three minutes and 15 seconds remaining. If you'd identify yourself again.
David Wharton, 667 Percy Street. I used to chair the Historic Preservation Commission, so I know it.
Thank you.
I will say to Mr., in response to Mr. Wolf, yeah, there is, there is a, that, that property is zoned commercial. There's a fast food restaurant there. They're perfectly able to build another one right on it. They don't need a, they don't need a rezoning. They don't need to take that office to commercial. You know, go right ahead. But what they're talking about is an expansion of an auto, an auto-oriented use into an office use. That I'm, I, I, everything that I know about Cookout and what's going to happen there is going to really increase the intensity there. We are happy with commercial uses. We would be happy with a retail use there. Or other office. I will, I will say there are other, I, I did a personal survey of all the tax value, okay? Value per acre that, that you get on Summit Avenue. And, and I will say, in general, if, office property, if you're interested in what kind of tax revenue is going to get, those, those larger office buildings on Summit produce, you know, somewhere around $2 million, $2 million per acre in terms of tax value. They're, they're quite compact and a very, a very efficient use of, of land. Fast food restaurants, excluding McDonald's, which for some reason seems to have a higher valuation, have about 30% less tax value per acre. They're inefficient.
Is that counting the sales tax that they collect or not?
That's the property sales tax that they collect. And that's because you have to make a lot of room for cars. What we want in our neighborhood is more people. We're quite different from the people that were opposing the rezoning here, here the other night. We, we have lots of single multifamily. We have lots of, we have commercial retail. The Sherwin-Williams store is, you know, I can see it from my front porch. It's great. It is, it is an urban dense neighborhood. We have low income, middle income, upper middle-class income. We, we, what we want is pedestrian intensity. And that can be office, and that can also be business intensity. But it is not compatible to expand, to expand auto intensity in that area. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else? We have 50 seconds remaining if anyone's in opposition has anything else. If not, we'll close the public hearing. Do we have any questions or comments?
Mr. Kirkman, just, I want to piggyback off what Commissioner Skenes said. The reason we're doing this is because they need the parking. Is that they're not going to be able to put another fast food restaurant on the property as it stands. It's going to be one, one operation with parking.
In order to get the, if they're going to utilize the existing parking that's there.
Which is, which is the land that is part of the parcel. It has to be.
Correct. Then they would have to rezone that. Otherwise, they would have to squeeze everything into that smaller space. And I couldn't tell you one way or another on that.
One thing I, you mentioned Fifth Avenue, not being part of Dunleith. But, but I will say, I mentioned earlier, I lived on Maple Street. My roommate at the time was Fabio Camara. I know he's the scrappy developer you kind of talked about that's been renovating houses over there. He owns about four. His mom lives in one. He lover of dogs. I think of him very, he's a very good friend. Yeah, I, I look at this area with the office. To me, we're, we're doing one thing to allow this, this use to exist. You have done a great job on the streetscaping. I drove down there tonight to eat dinner. You know, it, you've certainly closed the traffic off with bringing it down to the single lane on each side. The streetscaping in the center. on each side, the streetscaping in the center. I don't think this is going to hurt that. So for me, I'm not supporting more above that, right, going towards the city. But for the existing use, I'm going to vote to support it tonight.
I'd like to make a motion.
Yes, Ms. Magga.
Yes. Item Z 24-02-011. The Greensboro Planning and Zoning Commission believes that its action to recommend approval of the rezoning request for the property at 814 Summit Avenue from O Office and C-M Commercial Medium to CDCM, Conditional District Commercial Medium, to be consistent with the adopted Greensboro 2040 Comprehensive Plan, and considers the action taken to be reasonable in the public interest for the following reasons. One, the request is consistent with the Comprehensive Plan's future build format and future land use map. Two, the proposed CDCM zoning district as condition permits uses that fits the context of the surrounding area and limits negative impacts on the adjacent properties. Three, the request is reasonable due to the size, physical conditions, and other attributes of the area. It will benefit the property owner and the surrounding community, and approval is in the public interest.
Commissioner Gilmore, second.
Thank you, Ms. Magga and Mr. Gilmore. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? This approval constitutes final action unless an appeal is submitted in writing to the Planning Department and the appeal fee is paid within 10 days. Anyone may file such an appeal. All such appeals will be subject to a public hearing at the Tuesday, March 19, 2024 City Council Meeting. All adjoining property owners will be notified of any such appeal. That concludes our public hearings. Do we have any items from the Planning Department?
The only thing I'll mention for next month's meeting is you will have a, be considering a text amendment to Land Development Ordinance related to accessory dwelling units. And so there's information out right now, greensboro-nc.gov/aduse, if you want to get some of the information that's being considered. There's a survey out there as well for folks to make comments on that. And then once we have kind of the final amendment language, we'll get that to you and get you ready for next month's hearing.
How many cases do we have next month?
Two.
Two.
Plus the text amendment.
Yes.
I was going to say, I think the text amendment is going to be something that will, might spur some conversation. So I'm glad it's just two cases plus the text.
That's where we are right now, yes.
Can you use Texas instead of Texas?
As I stated, if you go to greensboro-nc.gov/aduse, you can get the basics of what we're doing.
Thank you. Anything else from the planning?
Yes, ma'am. Hold on, Ms. Skenes.
Yes. Can you repeat what you just said a little bit ago? Because you're as bad as Mr. Tashaw when it comes to holding the mic. The text amendment is in regards to what?
The accessory dwelling unit standards? ADUs?
Got it.
Yes. And just to be clear, I think people are confused. You can do ADUs now. What we're doing is trying to adjust the regulations to make them easier to develop in Greensboro. Correct.
Correct.
That's it for us.
Anything from, any items from the Planning and Zoning Commission members? I really appreciate all the extra work the staff did to get our November minutes straight. Thank you very much. Appreciate the input as well. And I guess I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
I think we did. I think we're done. Thank you all.